Another meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Monday, November 6th of 2023. The time is 6:00 PM. Ms. Trevino, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Gleason, Mayor Houston.
Here.
Ms. Garza.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
And Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
We have a four in present.
And Mr. Gleason is out of town and will not be joining us this evening. This evening, our invocation is being given by Jim Davis, pastor of the Grace Bible Church.
Almighty God, our Father, we humbly appeal to you as our benevolent Creator, God and Savior, for your mercies and for your help, for our mayor and city council, for the burden of their many responsibilities. We pray for each and every difficult decision and ask that you would give them your wisdom and strength. We pray that the authority and truth of your word would be that lamp unto their feet, enlighten to their path, give them grace to order the steps of our community in the paths of righteousness. We ask your grace for the benefit and health of our citizens of San Marcos. May we be quick to hear what you have to say to us in the Bible and courageous to do what is right. Help us to be quick to repent of those ways that are contrary to the authority of your word. Where our hearts may be hard and proud toward you, may they become tender and humble. In your word, you have said, "There is a way that seems right unto men, but the end thereof is the way of death." Deliver us that our city may seek your glory and may our council members know your help. In the name of Jesus Christ our Savior, amen.
Amen.
I did have a citizen's comment here, if that's okay for me to go ahead with that.
Is it associated with the prayer?
It is associated with the prayer.
With the prayer?
It is somewhat.
Okay.
I wanted to make a citizen's comment and express a pastor's concern about the promotion of pornographic materials for children in our schools and public library. The U.S. Department of Justice Federal Law on Obscenity strictly prohibits the distribution of obscene materials to minors. Also, the Texas Penal Code 4324 regarding the state, the sale of distribution or display of harmful materials to minors, 18 and under defines harmful material as that which appeals to the prurient interest of a minor in sex nudity or excretion. A person commits an offense if knowing that the material is harmful and knowing that the person is a minor, he sells, distributes, exhibits, or possesses for sale, distribution, or exhibition to a minor harmful material. I'm finding that what can't be sold in places of business is now being promoted in our schools through comprehensive sexuality education. Organizations like CICUS promote Marxist critical theory and they openly make known that their sex ed is for social change. Cartoon illustrations in elementary school books like It's Perfectly Normal appeals to the prurient interests of 10-year-olds with fully exposed genitals, homosexual acts, oral sex, mutual masturbation, and many other forms of deviant sexual behavior. And tragically, there is now a long list of books similar in nature that are made available in our schools and public libraries. Along with the comprehensive sexual education is SEL and a host of other educational programs that are simply proponents of rebranded critical race theory. I am not making this up. All one has to do is listen to what is being said publicly and said by these proponents. It is not only against the law, it is against any form of moral decency. And if we care at all about our children and protecting the innocence of childhood, and if we care about our present way of life, we must do whatever we can to see an end to it. We are permitting pedophiles to sexually groom our children with pornographic materials in our public libraries and school libraries. We are permitting revolutionaries to subvert the American way of life right in front of our faces. There are likely some who feel they are helping a problem and do not have the revolutionary agenda. And I do pray that it is because we are unaware of their true agenda and not willing to support of their malevolent intentions. As the Bible reports, it is inevitable that slumbering blocks, stumbling blocks will come, but who woe to him through whom it comes? It would be better for him to, if a milestone were hung around his neck and he were thrown into the sea, then that he would cause one of these little ones to stumble. I believe that we must stop...
Pastor Davis, your time is up?
These things...
It's three minutes and I should have moved that to citizen comment. But your three minutes is up. That's what we have for citizen comment.
Okay.
All right. Next, our pledges of allegiance to the United States and to Texas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Next is our citizen comment time period. The city council welcomes speakers at work sessions and regular meetings. To speak in person, you would sign up online, or you may sign up, and that's due at noon, or you may sign up at the clerk's office if you are here, and the deadline for that is 5:45 the day of the meeting. Speakers may speak once during the citizen comment time period and may not yield time to others. If you speak now about a public hearing topic, we ask that you not repeat the exact same comments again during the public hearing on the same topic. You'll have three minutes to speak when you state your name. There's a timer on the screen up here, and it starts when you state your name. You'll start in the green, and then the countdown begins. When you have 20 seconds left, the timer will show yellow, and when the timer is red, your time to speak is up. And when your time to speak is up, there's a bell that rings automatically. The mayor and council will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and in an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. We have a number of people who have signed up to speak this evening. I'm going to read the names. I'll read a few in order so you can get ready to line up over there by the microphone. First, we will have Jacob Graybill, followed by Kama Davis. Diana Baker will be remote. Adam Von Arnt, Camille Phillips. And when we get closer, I'll call out some more names. State your name. Your three minutes begins.
Awesome, thank you. Hi, honorable council members and mayor. My name is Jacob Graybill. I'm a fourth year at Texas State University studying government, and I started grad school in the spring. I wanted to say that while most students see themselves as transitory in San Marcos, I plan on sticking around here for a long time. And because of that, I'm concerned with what the Vision Plus Plan Comprehensive could do and how it negatively could impact longtime homeowners, renters, and students in San Marcos. Due to concerns in the outline, I'm going to urge you to vote no on the Vision Plus Plan, or at least take amendments negatively to change these impacts. I'd like to say that my main point is growth is inevitable in San Marcos. The president of Texas State wants 10,000 new students in Texas State, and San Marcos is in between two major population centers, and is primed for growth. It is inevitable. I'm afraid that what this growth and influx of students and people is going to do to San Marcos if this Vision Plus Plan passes. We need to plan for growth so that we have enough equitable housing to accommodate for this influx, and we cannot repeat the mistakes of previous cities and vote yes for a city plan that will allow for the displacement of current San Marcos residents. If the Vision Plus Plan passes, it will constrict the San Marcos housing supply, further causing property taxes and rental prices to go up in the long run. We know this is true because this happened in cities time and time again. In Austin, 20 years ago, it was a much smaller city, but they had a plan similar to the Vision Plus Plan, and this constricted the housing prices for current residents. And now, housing prices, the appraisal values, and with that, the property taxes of the single-family home residents rose. And with that, rental prices also rose. The original Vision Plus Plan, or the original Vision Plan, was fantastic in accommodating for growth that is inevitable for San Marcos. This new plan buries its head in the sand in hopes that this growth won't come. By banning high-density mixed-use developments and saying that they hurt the character of San Marcos, this is being short-sighted. Austin tried this, and it drastically rose the appraisal values. I am urging you to please vote no on this, as it will jack up rents and property taxes for students, longtime homeowners, and renters who can't afford single-family houses in San Marcos. We don't like to hear it, but density is part of San Marcos' character. It's a buzzword, but this doesn't mean that it's not important. If we go forward with this Vision Plus Plan, you're creating further of a dichotomy between single-family homes and these massive student 20-story complexes. The original Vision Plan accommodated for middle housing, duplexes, townhomes, and even buildings that look exactly like single-family homes but carry, you know, two or even more families. We can preserve the character of San Marcos without bifurcating this housing and making sure that you can only afford a house if you can afford a two-acre plot of land. My final point is to say that we can't stop San Marcos' growth, but we can account for it, and the original Vision Plan does. Vote no on this Vision Plus Plan so the community isn't exclusively single-family homes and giant student high rises, the mix of different housing options that we can all go to afford. Thank you.
Next is Kama Davis.
Can y'all hear me okay? Or do I need to make it lower? Okay, lower a little bit.
Stand closer.
How's that? All right, thank you. Tell me when my time starts.
When you say your name, it'll start.
Excellent, thank you. My name is Kama Davis, and I am a resident here of San Marcos. I'd like to thank you first for all the work that y'all do. I know it's a hard job. On Agenda Item 1, I request that you vote for the Comprehensive Plan Plus Plus. It has taken years of drafting, it has cost tens of thousands of dollars, and it has included thousands of hours of work to bring this inclusive, community-driven version to completion. Again, I ask that you say yes and adopt Comprehensive Plan Plus Plus. On Agenda Item 2, please vote yes for Option 2 of the Downtown Area Plan to expand the C.M. Allen Parkway Green Space District. As of 6:00 PM today, 412 people from all over San Marcos have signed a petition asking that you vote yes and adopt Option 2. The 412 signatures are equivalent to 412 emails, 412 phone calls, 412 people coming to City Hall, 412 voices, and potentially 412 votes. The people are paying attention and are encouraging you to vote yes on Option 2. Planning and zoning has already overwhelmingly voted in favor of Option 2. The Downtown Area Plan is a conceptual document, a vision. If we could wave a magic wand and show how we want this land on C.M. Allen Parkway to be used, it would be to expand the green space. Green space on C.M. Allen Parkway will prevent flooding, specifically in Blanco Gardens, whereas development of this area will flood Blanco Gardens. Green space will mitigate damage to the river, which is right across the street, and utilize land that will benefit all San Markans. It is true that developing this land with high-rise or moderate buildings and commercial will generate property taxes. However, San Marcos will spend that money mitigating and cleaning up flood damage. San Marcos needs to look at the cost of developing near our river, which is not just monetary. I just found out today that the San Marcos gambusia, a creature found only in the San Marcos River, will be listed as extinct. That cost is too high. Voting for Option 2 is not only a vote for green space on C.M. Allen Parkway, it is also a vote for green space and parkland all over San Marcos. Option 2 can be funded through grants. It will not take money away from funding other parkland all over San Marcos. We are asking not for a compromise, but that you please vote and adopt Option 2 in the Downtown Area Plan. Please honor the wishes of the 412 crystal-clear voices of your constituents. Please embrace the vision of the Planning and Zoning Commissioners, and again, vote yes on Option 2. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Diana Baker, who joins us remotely.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm here to talk about the comp plan. I was a committee member on the comp plan, and it was my understanding that the consultants were supposed to be representing what the people of this community wanted. I've had the privilege of working with some fabulous consultants that the city has contracted with it in the past. So as a committee member, I expected the consultants to explain their methodology and that they would publish the raw data that they got in the many meetings with the committee and the public. They never published the raw data. They never allowed the committee to see the draft or vote on it. When the draft came out, I was shocked at how poorly written it was. It was filled with vague language that could be, you know, it could have been understood in many different ways, filled with grammatical errors and contradictions. I want to thank the volunteers that spent their time cleaning up the first draft. They probably saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars just cleaning up the grammatical errors alone. Again, they were supposed to be representing what community wanted, not what some vague, you know, idea of what is best for the city is supposed to be. They weren't supposed to be selling us on their ideas. They were supposed to be compiling our ideas and hopefully mixing it all up and the cream would flow to the top. I think that we need to be respectful of each other in this situation, and I just hope that we don't have to pay too much more money to these consultants because they've already made 800,000. So I'm grateful for the corrections that were made. They saved us a lot of money, and I think you should vote for the edited version. Thank you very much.
Adam Von Arnt. And after him will be Camille Phillips remotely, then Kate McIntyre. I have Virginia Parker signed up, but I think she told us at 3:00 she couldn't be here. And then John David Carson, and then Rosalie Ray. And thank you for allowing me to interrupt.
No problem. My name is Adam Von Arnt. Regarding the Downtown Area Plan, I have a few questions I'd like you to consider. How do these proposed changes benefit the citizens and the city of San Marcos? How does this affect our flood plan? If Options 1 or 3 are approved, what types of buildings are going to be permitted? Approving any future purpose-built student housing should be a hard no until the city gets a handle on the rampant violations being perpetrated by the current student housing complexes. For example, the junction, which is not registered with the city, which violates City Ordinance Section 34-821, is also infested with toxic mold. And it appears the city has done nothing to fine, tax, or otherwise penalize the landlords for not providing a livable habitat for their lease-bound tenants. You know, I worry that this council doesn't have its finger on the pulse of the people that it represents. This city is over 70% renters. What are you doing to protect us? That being said, I'm concerned that even the compromise of Option 3, the development will probably not focus on affordable multifamily housing, which is what your citizens want and need. Beyond that, the reality is, other than Option 2, there's a high chance of other San Marcos neighborhoods being flooded in the future because of a decision being made arbitrarily today. So please, think about what this means for your entire community before you vote. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Camille Phillips, joining us online.
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, you might speak up just a little more.
Okay, can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, I'm Camille Phillips. My address is P.O. Box 172, here in San Marcos. And I would like to talk about Items 1 and 2. These are on the consent agenda. Please pass Item 1, the Comprehensive Plan. Item 2 is the Downtown Area Plan. Please pull it from the consent agenda, then vote for Option 2. And if you can't do that, please pull it from the consent agenda and table it or postpone it. Due process has not been given to the community about the options for C.M. Allen. The community has not been properly informed about the potential for big box apartments on C.M. Allen. Such apartments would affect the river in many ways. I fear that concreting over C.M. Allen with big buildings would make flooding worse, both upstream and downstream. Options 1 and 3 of the Downtown Area Plan include such apartments. The community needs to have an extended conversation about C.M. Allen and the river. Option 2 would provide flood mitigation features. We had a good rain on October 26th. The river was up over the Aquarina Springs Bridge that day. The apartment building at 210 North Edward Gary, a block from C.M. Allen, has a visible crack in it. I hope no rain got in there on October 26th. I would like all areas of town to have parks and other amenities. The biggest amenity of all is not to be flooded. More than half a billion dollars, that's B billion, worth of apartments are currently under construction in San Marcos. And more than half a billion dollars, that's B with a billion, worth of apartments were built here between 2012 and this year. The industry website Apartments.com today listed 1,718 vacant apartments for rent in San Marcos. We can take our time with more apartments downtown. Please pull Item 2 from the consent agenda, then please vote for Option 2, or table Item 2 at least until February, so we can inform the public. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kate McIntyre.
Hi, my name is Kate McIntyre, and I live at 201 Ridgewood, here in San Marcos. That means I live in a small circle of townhomes, one of the cottage courts that the mayor at the last city council meeting said was unsuitable for existing neighborhoods. The mayor's comment, which sends the message that I'm unwelcome in this city, was simply the logical extension of the way many members of council and all of PNZ speak regularly about people who live in apartments. The truth is, the townhome I live in now is the closest I've ever been to living in a single-family home. I want to speak today as a lifelong resident of apartments. My parents rented until I was seven years old. The first and only home they ever owned was a condo apartment in a three-story building with two apartments on each floor. The discussion of apartments last week assumed the apartments were only suitable for students, certainly not for families, and that their existence destroyed neighborhood community. The truth is that the building I grew up in was a community. All of the residents were families with children. I watered plants, and cats sat for the neighbors upstairs when they were out of town. My brother was best friends with the boy who lived on the first floor. We all swapped Christmas cookies every year and had keys to let one another in when we got locked out. And the woman who owned the single-family home next door, she fed us raspberries from her garden. She threw our balls back when my brother swung too hard learning T-ball. She saw us as her neighbors, deserving of welcome and dignity. I was never ashamed not to live in a house. I never felt I was missing anything. The cottage court I live in now is much the same. We swap cat sitting duties with a neighbor across the court. We had a monthly game night with the neighbors next door. If it hadn't been for the existence of this community of townhomes, my wife and I would have had to rent when we moved here. For so many families, small-scale apartments and townhomes offer a way to own your own home that would otherwise be unavailable. When council and commission members say these homes have no place in existing neighborhoods or are only fit for students who belong somewhere else, it speaks volumes about who you serve, who you value, and who you think deserves to be your neighbor. I urge you to vote no on PNZ's undemocratically revised Comprehensive Plan and to vote instead for a San Marcos that all of us can afford to call home. Thank you.
Next is Virginia Parker. She's joining us online.
Hey, guys, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hello, council members and mayor. I'm Virginia Parker with the San Marcos River Foundation, and y'all have to excuse me, I'm hiding from children and my dog. I wasn't going to speak tonight since I spoke at the 3 o'clock meeting, but this is such an important topic, and I wanted to make sure that I was able to speak to all of the council members. I would like to ask for you to please vote for Option 2 of the C.M. Allen District within the Downtown Master Plan. This is not against infill development, and that is not against apartment living or affordable housing. It's just not the right location to put five-story buildings. In today's 3 o'clock workshop, staff gave an amazing presentation showing the riverside users were more likely to spend money downtown, and this is financial proof that we need to prioritize our river. It really is the reason a lot of people come to San Marcos, me being one of them. I moved here from Austin. I understand that the decision of what to do with the C.M. Allen area is a very difficult one, but although Option 3 seems very tempting, as it is slightly better than the original Option 1, it still encourages multi-story infill development along the flood plain. We have not had our largest flood yet, and capturing runoff from the hill through green space before it gets to the river will only improve water quality and could mitigate some flooding for downstream neighbors. C.M. Allen is not an either-or proposal. Dr. Kimberly Meitzens sent y'all an option for grant opportunity through the Guadalupe Blanco Flood Planning Group, and there are opportunities for grants through flood mitigation. If it is so much, oh, excuse me, it is so much cheaper to prevent flooding than to try to fix issues after they occur. Prevention is not only cheaper, but easier and less disruptive to water quality and the environment. Just because you vote for Option 2, it does not mean that some of the parcels will not be built out, but it does mean that some of the parcels could be used for green space and flood mitigation. Again, this is a vision for what you want to see going forward. It is not a mandate. It is not eminent domain. It is just saying that you would like to try to mitigate issues that we already have and are inevitably going to get worse, instead of voting to ensure that they become worse. Please vote for Option 2. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be John David Carson, followed by Rosalie Ray, LMC Lisa Marie Copoletta, Alan Dominguez, Eva Rodriguez, Anthony Romano, Tamia Shock, I'm sorry, I hardly mispronounced that, and Nancy Moore. Mr. Carson, it's your turn.
Mayor and council, John David Carson, 1905, B2, here in San Marcos. I'm speaking tonight regarding the comp plan and the Downtown Area Plan. Starting with the comp plan, I continue to encourage adoption of the original Vision SMTX document created by a robust, transparent public process that was guided by informed professional planners and local staff. Of course, any typographical update should be made, but the substantial changes from the Rewrite Committee were developed by a small group of non-representative citizens focused more on preserving the past than building a better future. The Rewrite changes deliver a future San Marcos that is less affordable, sprawls out further into undisturbed lands, and gives almost all of its residents no choice but to be locked into their cars sitting in traffic. Like some of you, I was raised here. Whether we like it or not, San Marcos is maturing from a town into a city in this very moment. As such, environmental, public health, and fiscal implications of this plan are heightened. The Rewrite's major changes will create more structural sprawl that will impact generations to come, not just the next 10 years. Again, I encourage you to adopt the original plan with only typographical updates. Now on to the Downtown Plan. I appreciate your thoughtful discussion last meeting and encourage finalizing the plan with Option 3 for C.M. Allen. Option 3 respects the existing entitlements of these properties. It allows them to deliver answers to many of the needs described in the Downtown Plan, and it sets the stage for the city and property owners to work together towards holistic positive outcomes, including meaningful improvements to the river parks. In contrast, support for Option 2 is knee-jerk, generated by everyone's love of parks and our fears of flooding. However, there is no analysis that Option 2 would have a substantial impact on either. Even if it could, then this wouldn't mean parks for families, they'd be large holes in the ground to collect water. The properties are already largely impervious, so claiming that developing these properties would flood downtown or other areas is intellectually dishonest. What is certain is the double-whammy fiscal impact of Option 2. You cannot claim a desire to keep taxes affordable, or to prioritize investment in eastside parks, or to conserve at-risk lands throughout the watershed, and then vote for an option that would not only cost the public tens of millions of dollars, but remove far more than that from the tax rolls. A basic consideration of opportunity cost or limited resources demonstrates that this is an either-or question. Lastly, let's return to the relatively low-cost work the city can do within its existing river parks that would expand usable park space, reduce impervious cover actually within the flood zone directly next to the river, and improve water quality. That is to remove existing buildings and parking lots in Plaza Park, and work with private property owners along C.M. Allen to absorb those demands while still serving the broader needs of the downtown. needs of the downtown. We welcome that conversation. Option three is partnership between the city and property owners, whereas option two puts us at odds. It backs property owners into a corner. It fosters conflict, and I am confident that it would not lead to positive outcomes. I urge you to adopt the downtown plan with option three tonight. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rosalie Ray.
Hello, Rosalie Ray, I also live at 201 Ridgewood. I generally make it a point to not have the last word when my wife is already right, so I will just say that I urge you to restore cottage courts and multiplexes to the uses for existing neighborhoods because they are already in existing neighborhoods. I don't know what happens if you pass the plan as written now, or as rewritten now, I guess, and I want to make changes to property I own where no longer a preferred use that triggers things. So I ask you to just actually reflect the neighborhoods you have existing. I would also urge, if you do not just go back to the community-written plan, that you at least remove the word "vehicle trips" from the land use objectives. It enables us to focus on our most vulnerable residents, the kids who walk and bike to Goodnight and Miller, the seniors who ride buses to appointments and to social activities. Those are the people that we should have the objective to serve with that part of the plan, and so I would urge you, again, if you don't just vote for Vision SMTX, that you make those amendments. On item two, the downtown plan, I get that people want to say planning is just a vision, right? But these plans matter. If they didn't matter, we wouldn't spend thousands of dollars on them. And I want your work and all of the decisions and deliberations that we have to matter. And if you put option two in, you're essentially saying, yeah, this would be great, but we know it's entitled and we know it won't work, but if we don't say it, we can't have it. Well, you could actually, with option three, make a really concrete district there that says, or really a not-concrete district there, that says, hey, let's have permeable pavement, let's be green, let's do all of this in partnership with the developers. If you go with option two, you're not building four beautiful parks. You're spending $27 million to tear up parking lots and replace them with something that nobody has really made a plan for. The idea of option three is, like John David said, a partnership. Sit down, work with the folks who already are entitled to build five-story buildings and will need to be bought off if they don't, and make a plan that improves the river quality from the existing parking lots that it currently is. Again, that downtown plan was made with the vision of strengthening that connection between the riverfront users and the downtown. The best way we can do that is not by just leveling it or throwing up our hands at what we want, but actually working in partnership with the folks who own that land. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Lisa Marie Capoletta, LMC, who joins us online. There she is.
Hi, good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta, they call me LMC. I think there needs to be investigation on urban renewal.
Ms. Capoletta, we can barely hear you. Can you?
Can you hear me now? Is that better?
That's better, thank you.
Okay, good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta, they call me LMC. I think there needs to be an investigation about urban renewal, also called urban relocation by some people, pushing Hispanics off of riverfront property now in Blanco Gardens only to be flooded out again. Density is not part of San Marcos' character. In fact, that's why many of you were elected, because we are tired of that. Monday night has a very controversial topic, when oftentimes our meetings are on Tuesday nights, and this is about par, what happens every time we have a controversial topic in our community. It just mysteriously ends up on a Monday night when there's an aberration in the schedule. The original comprehensive plan, it had cherry-picked comments by city staff and the consultants, and those of us who were on the original comprehensive master plan committee were shocked when we read the final draft. We kept making our comments, and every time a new draft would come out, again, our mouths would drop. Now you have letters in your packet, a petition, and you have speakers as well as emails of those who want option two. The irony is that developments are what are raising property taxes in our community, making it difficult for people to afford the taxes, so this argumentation that we need all these developments for the tax rolls actually functions and gentrifying the community. So it's a falsehood to try to push the false narrative that we need these developments for the tax rolls. The east side wants more green space by the river. So to characterize it any other way is fictitious, it's false, and it's actually a red herring. The voters want green space by the river. They wrote you letters that are in your packet. They signed a petition with 412 voters, that's 199 people, voters today signed the petition, and that's just in five days. The river is not a park, the river is a river, and the east side wants a park by the river. The downtown plan should have been passed after the neighborhood plan, and this is something I called to the attention of the city planners, and it was ignored. The petition, this is a controversial agenda. Once again, it's on a Monday night, the city has a long trek order of doing this. Some people are afraid of giving speeches, some people don't even know how to sign up. Some people do know how to vote, though, and I find it interesting that Mr. Gleason is gone, but this will make or break some of your careers. It is time for the city to understand that you're treating Hispanics in this community differently than you are privileged, white developers, because y'all had no problem moving those Hispanics out of that land. And now suddenly, there's this whole discussion what that land is for. That is the river, that is our community, and I would kindly ask you to vote for option two. And we're going to revisit the split screen, because apparently the city staff are refusing, they're weaponizing technology against the Zoom speakers, and we'll cover this more at a later date. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
Our next speaker is Alan Dominguez, to be followed by Eva Rodriguez. Alan here? We will move on to Eva Rodriguez then.
Good evening. My name is Eva Rodriguez, and I live on 600 C.M. Allen, and I'm for option two. I have lived in San Marcos all my life. I have seen the growth in this city, the changes that have taken place. I have seen how asphalt and concrete has taken over. I have seen how growth has taken place, and I am seeing how we're losing green space in our city. I was born in San Marcos. I have seen it all, or a lot. We're losing green space, especially downtown and along the river, and that worries me with the idea of more apartments. We don't need more apartments. More multi-unit apartments than C.M. Allen will cause our lovely riverside scenery to vanish, to disappear. If we build apartments in the future, we are going to see flooding, and I have been in the floods. We'll see traffic congestion, and I have it on my street. Crime, littering, and I have it on my street. I feel that we shouldn't damage the natural elements of our city in favor of concrete, since climate change is harming many natural things. We need to preserve and safeguard a river, open space, and the atmosphere that makes San Marcos special. These sites that we're talking about may be our last opportunity to create this kind of green space for family outing for our children and to prevent flooding, because once they're gone, they're gone. I believe option two will protect our river and protect flooding. Please keep us in mind. We love our river, and we love San Marcos. Thank you.
Alan Dominguez?
Not today.
Okay. Anthony Romano?
Hello, I'm Anthony Romano. I live at 704 Snyder Hill Drive, San Marcos, Texas. Been in San Marcos since about 1981, and just left to serve in the military, and then my wife forced me to move back here. But we really love the city, and I am an advocate for the option two. And the reason I'm looking for option two is, ask yourself, when we served in the military, my wife and I, we traveled a lot. We lived in Manhattan, we lived in Brooklyn, we lived in Boston, Los Angeles, and I ask you to consider, are we ready for that type of change in the infrastructure? Has our, I know a lot of people talk about the flooding, are we prepared for that? If it does, have we put things in place to prevent the flooding in that area? Are we prepared for the increase in crime? Because it will come. I live in Baltimore, and that is probably one of the most dangerous cities I've lived in, and I worked at the VA Hospital, it was 3/4 a mile from where I lived, and I was mugged three times going to work. So are you prepared for that? Have we prepared our San Marcos Police Department for that? And are we also prepared for the other crime that will come if the apartments are catered toward students? That other crime, you look at the crime that the universities experience, and you dissect that to look at, what are they experiencing on campus and on their sites? And all I ask is that you decide, are we ready for this growth in that area at this time? That's really why I'm leaning for option two. I've seen the worst in some of the worst cities in the United States, in L.A., and the homelessness in that area, and it will come here. You will see homeless downtown people, and I think we're kind of seeing that already. And I just don't think we're ready for it. I don't think we're ready for the flooding, I don't think we're ready for the crime rate. And the other thing I want to say, I appreciate all of you being here on a Monday at this time, because I know some of you, and some of you are my neighbors, and I know one served in the Air Force with me. So I appreciate you being here and taking the time to, it's a big topic, very emotional for people, and my mother-in-law, who spoke before I did, and I am an advocate for option two. Let's think about it if we can, let's make this a, some of the town, keep it the way it was if we can. I just don't think we're ready for what we've experienced as we've traveled in the country. Thank you.
Next is Tamia Jacques. If you'll state your name again, and I'll try to pronounce it right the next time.
Yes, it's Tamia Jacques. Thank you so much for having me. I would like option two, for you guys to vote for that. It's really important. Once the river's gone, it's gone. You know, in this climate today, we're facing climate change and just so many things with our environment. I've seen the river just dwindle, and it's so heartbreaking. I mean, a lot of people that have moved here or live here enjoy the river. It doesn't matter what socioeconomic background you're from, you know, who you are. This is a jewel of San Marcos, and for us not to make that really important and just cast it off, we can put apartments in different areas, but why not preserve something that has never run dry in history? You know, this is important, the springs are important, water is important for our livelihood, and so we should not take that lightly. And I live in the downtown area, and so this is important, you know, and I'm close to it, I swim in the river. It's important to me, my family, friends, just everyone, so, you know, I just want to make that point, you know, this is important. Thank you, thank you.
And our last speaker is Nancy Moore.
Hello, my name is Nancy Moore, 15 Tanglewood, San Marcos. I am, I believe that who's entitled are the seventh endangered species that are left at this river, that this council, each one of you, will be known by what we vote for, you know. I think this is a huge decision, and it's a vortex of change in our, we're not against developers, but I want to remind us that, I don't remember if you remember this T-shirt that says that we are the oldest continually inhabited neighborhood, peoplehood, in all of North America. It's right here in San Marcos. That is so wondrous, and that the university started with, they hired a doctor, Dr. John Loos, to walk through the World Heritage Designation for San Marcos. I want us to remember that. I imagine that all of the parkland that we have around our city, that maybe it's been for something huge, that our community has a dream, and I believe it's through 11,000 years that these people have lived together in harmony, and we didn't destroy it. I believe that putting anything on this land, it will deter. I want the city to, I want each of you to guarantee the 412 people that you will be, if we do a compromise, that they will protect, that you will be able to say, the runoff from garage underneath the earth, parking for thousands of students, will not have cracks in it. The water table is hit at about six feet, it won't destroy this river, and we know that car emissions are probably one of the hardest things on this river. So you started the dream sessions, and this is, you've hired someone to ask us what we dream of, what would we like? Well, you've got 412 people, and probably more as we're sitting here talking about this, to say, we dream of a green space. And what if we started working for a World Heritage Site? What if we focused on the economic boom for a World Heritage Site, and we're the ones to do it? Thank you.
And that concludes our citizen comment time period. Next is consent agenda. The following ordinances, resolutions, et cetera, numbered one through seven, may be acted upon by one motion. No separate discussion or action is necessarily necessary unless desired by a council member, in which case we will pull those items for that discussion. I'm going to pull item one and two, surprise, and ask, are there any others from three through seven that anyone wants to pull? Pull, no. I'll need a second later.
Number five.
Ms. Garza is pulling item five.
Oh, wait, let me just make sure. Hold on.
Are there any others?
Give me one second, let me just double-check it.
No, I'm trying to buy you some time.
Oh, yeah.
Anyone else has anything to pull? Okay, it is number five?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then I would appreciate a motion to approve items three, four, six, and seven.
Motion to approve items three, four, six, and seven.
All right, motion by Mr. Mendoza, seconded by Mr. Prather. Mr. Vino, let's see where we land on these.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason, Ms. Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Motion passes six, five to zero.
Okay, so we will come back to those after our public hearings. Mr. Vino, would you read item eight for us, please, our first public hearing?
Received our presentation, hold the public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2023-80 annexed into the city approximately 17.937 acres out of the Barnett-Kane survey abstract number 281, including adjacent right-of-way in Hayes County, Texas, generally located at the northeast corner of the Highway 123 and Redwood intersection, case number AN-23-08, including procedural provisions and providing effective date, and consider pro-laborance 2023-80 on the first of two readings.
Okay, presentation. Ms. Hernandez, good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Division
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is an approximately 18-acre parcel that's before City Council for annexation this evening. And we have zoning as the next item on the agenda. The property is located near the intersection of State Highway 123 and Redwood Road. The future project will receive San Marcos water and wastewater and it is in Bluebonnet's electric service area. Next slide. This is a voluntary annexation of land that's currently surrounded by properties in the ETJ, which are mostly vacant. Kayden, if you could skip two slides for me, please. In September, City Council approved a service agreement for this property and set the annexation schedule, which includes this evening's public hearing item. Next slide. Staff recommends approval of the annexation as presented.
Okay, I will open the public hearing. And we do have, uh, Tamia Jacques. Is she still here? She signed up to speak on this one. I'm looking in the lobby. Is she here? Okay. Tell you what, we'll, we'll go to some other, a couple of others and I'll see if she's still here. Um, okay. Anyone in council chambers? This is not, we asked that you sign up just so we can get the right spelling of your name. Uh, but you may speak at this time if you wish. Anyone? If you'll go to the podium for public hearings, we need your address. So if you'll state your name and your address, same rules on the three minutes apply here.
Okay. My name is Christie Crawford Allard. And I am actually a resident of Sibolo, but I work for our family nonprofit, which is Crawford Family Historical Museum. And it is located at the property of 1701 North State Highway 123 here in San Marcos, Texas. And it does back up to this property that is now before you. So I just wanted you to know that there is a, a tenant that stays up at that property. That property has been in the Crawford family since Edward Garry's family and the marriage between, um, the Crawfords and the Garry's. This land was then bought. So we've had this property since the 1800s. Um, there is a current museum. There is a current genealogy research center. And we do have planned to expand and open to the public as a great resource up on the hill. So I just wanted you to know that it's not all vacant.
Okay. Anyone else? Did Ms. Jacques come back? I don't see her. Okay, then we will go to, uh, next is, uh, Lisa Marie Capoletta, who joins us online.
Hi, hi, can you guys hear me okay? Everyone always says that and I'm like, ugh, why do y'all say that? But now I understand why they do. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta. They call me LMC. I live at 1322 Belvin. Is it equitable that online speakers have a feat, a timer featured on the final playback on the cable TV versus those who are in the chambers who do not have a timer, plastered right next to their face? In fact, more than 50% of the landscape, I think a quarter of the landscape of the screen for the Zoom speakers is a timer. And I find that incredibly demeaning. And I'm not sure why it's so difficult for city staff to just move the window. There's a little bar there, I feel like I'm in class right now. There's a little bar there off to the side that you can scroll to the left or the right to make those adjustments. This is similar to the weaponization of technology that happened when we had another communication director, and Jane should remember this, when it took me three years to get the picture-in-picture adjusted because the audience was not seeing those who were in the chambers. And the public deserves to see the speaker and the reaction of those on the dais for full transparency. And I'm not understanding why we have an organizational culture that weaponizes technology against the citizens in speeches and why it is so difficult and why a timer even needs to be on the screen when someone is giving a speech. Right now, I am, I know that you guys do not have a timer over the speakers in the chamber. And when this final playback comes back, are they going to see the actual reaction shots of city staff sitting up there as well as the dais? Because I've gone back to watch these things and it's very troubling. You know, for you guys, you get paid, whether you're city staff or you're an elected official. We do this on our own time. Many of us feel very unheard. Time after time again, you guys are annexing property and yet still our property taxes go up. And that is very troubling. I feel this is a form of control and intimidation on the part of city staff for refusing to have an equitable picture on the Zoom for the Zoom speakers. Finally, those of you in the audience who are waiting for these controversial agenda items, where have you been for the last two years? The reason why your property taxes are going up, the reason why your water rates are going up, the reason why these shenanigan developments come up over and over again is because you are not storming City Hall. Do you realize when they had seven agenda items where they raised all of your rates from wastewater rates to utility rates to property rates? A budget that was very difficult, if I would believe not transparent. There was one person who spoke at all of those. And unless you start coming up week after week, time after time, they will continue on with these shenanigans. That's the only thing that they understand is storming City Hall in a peaceful, loving, well-prepared, well-researched speech. So you kind of have yourselves to blame for it. Thank you for your time and God bless San Marcos.
Okay, and Ms. Jacques is not in the lobby? Okay. Uh, then I will close the public hearing. And I await a motion on the annexation of this property. Motion from, uh, Mr. Prather, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I'll give that to Ms. Garza. Um, council, questions, thoughts? Concerns? Ready to vote? Ms. Trevino? Are we voting with our buttons?
No, not today. Um, Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason, Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right, moving on to item nine. Ms. Trevino.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2023-81, admitting the official zoning map of the city in case number ZZ-23-17, by resorting approximately 17.937 acres of land out of the Barnett-Kane survey abstract number 281 in Hayes County, Texas, generally located at the northeast corner of the Highway 123 and Redwood Road intersection from FD Future Development to CD5, Character District 5, or subject to the consent of the owner and other less intense zoning district classification, including procedural provisions and provide an effective date and consider pro-laborance 2023-81 on the first of two readings.
Presentation.
Mayor and Council, Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. Next slide. This is the same 18-acre parcel that we were discussing in the previous annexation item. Next slide. It is currently vacant and surrounded by mostly vacant properties in the ETJ. There are some adjacent uses. Uh, but you can see from the aerial map, there's a lot of open space there next to this property. Next slide. The applicant is requesting Character District 5 zoning in order to construct one-story apartments. Next slide. Vision San Marcos, our river runs through us, which is our currently adopted comprehensive plan, shows the property within the East Village Medium Intensity Zone. Just wanted to let y'all know that this is also a mixed-use medium in Vision SMTX. Plus, plus. Next slide. In a medium intensity zone or mixed use in the, in the upcoming comp plan that we will get adopted very soon, Character District 5 is a zoning district that should be considered. Next slide. Character District 5 allows our most dense residential. However, the proposed apartments are one-story. And in order to allow the single-story apartments in the CD5 zoning district, the applicant had to get an additional approval of an alternative compliance from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So once the zoning is effective, then they can build their one-story apartments. Next slide. The property is not in an environmentally sensitive area. Next slide. And the project must comply with all of the city requirements for street connectivity. We did talk about utilities with annexation, so we will go on to the next slide. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request with an eight to zero vote and staff recommends approval as presented. That concludes my presentation.
All right, I will open the public hearing and ask, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak far against or about this zoning? No one in the lobby? Okay, then we'll go to, uh, Lisa Marie Capoletta, who joins us online.
Man, I was really going to try to be soft-spoken for these speeches, but apparently you guys can't hear me. So I'm sorry if I sound like a drill sergeant, but I do know how to speak from my diaphragm. Good evening, this is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta. They call me LMC. I live at 1322 Belvin. Well, the notification under the code is abysmal for some of these larger situations. And that's something that some of us have been requested, that, that we, we extend the notification, especially those who are being annexed. And, and I think it's only equitable. And I wonder what kind of blowback you're going to get once the neighbors in this area see what's going up. If we truly cared about equity in this community, there would be a cost-benefit analysis on the increase in property taxes for residents whenever there's some sort of development that goes up. And that's the problem that some speakers are not coming to terms with this evening, is that whenever you increase high rises or have multiple family dwellings near a single-family neighborhood where people are already struggling, you increase gentrification and property taxes and people lose their homes. And then it creates a cycle where we have developers buying the land, creating high rises. The only people that bank are the developers, not the tenants, not the residents, and certainly not the ecology of the river and trees and so forth. If we truly cared and had an equity mindset, then we would have some sort of cost-benefit analysis for the taxpayer on how much this added infrastructure, whether it's wastewater lines or water lines, would cost us at the end game. Because year after year, we're told that they need to increase rates so the rates down the line will not go up. But year after year, the rates keep going up. It is true. And all of you know that most of the families in this community, their kids are on free lunches. That means their parents are, are struggling to pay, to make ends meet to the point where they're struggling to pay for food. Do you really think that these parents can afford increased property taxes in the current climate that we're living? The final thing I want to say is I am very troubled that I see nothing on your agenda about the world situation that is going on. And I don't need, need some sort of whatever virtue signaling of which side you're on. I'm talking about the real threats that exist in this community that are all over national news. And I don't need to repeat them online. But if this city management team is attuned to the global situation, the threats coming from law enforcement, I am confused why the citizens have not been given an update to reassure us that we are safe. Because we all know what happens when people panic. They do stupid things. And when people don't have food on the shelf, and I'm just telling you right now that we have families with not even food in the cupboard right now, to the point where their kids are getting their lunch and their breakfasts from the school district, what's going to happen then? I've heard nothing about my request for emergency generators. I've heard nothing about my request for an emergency infrastructure for neighbors to communicate with law enforcement so that we don't have some sort of anarchy rise in the streets. And I am troubled that that was not on your agenda tonight, considering the global situation. Thank you for your time and God bless San Marcos.
And that will close our public hearing, council. I'm looking to see if there is a motion. Motion to approve from Mr. Mendoza and a second with, uh, Mr. Prather. Questions, thoughts, concerns? Ms. Gonzalez, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Professor Capoletta brought up some great points about some analysis that have not been done. Uh, can you be more clear on that? Have they considered the cost it's going to cost us to do that? And how much revenue are we going to be getting in taxes? And it's, if it's going to pay for itself?
Sure. So the cost to the community to build the project, there, there shouldn't be a cost. The developer is responsible for extending the infrastructure, for building the new roads. All of those costs are on the developer. What will the property bring in in taxes? I wouldn't be able to tell because we don't know what the future appraisal will be on that project.
All the lines, uh, over, uh, at this time of the sewer lines and the water lines, will they fit to handle the capacity that's going to come out of there? Or the developer is going to add additional line, lines if we have to do that?
Sure. So that will depend on the studies that they do during the plating process, if the lines aren't big enough. And, and this development is causing the lines to need to be oversized? Yes, they would have to oversize those lines. Um, I was going to flip to my map. I had one in the annexation presentation. But there are lines existing in the general vicinity. So it probably isn't going to be a lot of extension so much as them doing the connections and, and those types of things.
It's not going to require another, uh, lift plant or nothing like that for?
I wouldn't have the answer to that at this point until we start going through those studies with plating.
And if it did, who would pay for that?
They would.
They would?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Flooding, that's another concern that everybody has and we all, everybody's going to have. Um, what have we done about surveying that land or making sure that neighbors are not going to get affected?
Sure. So we have a couple of tools. One is the environmental analysis that we do as staff. And there is no floodplain or any environmental, um, concerns with this particular area on the east side of town. They will have to do a watershed protection plan during the plating phases. So once the zoning is approved, they have a lot of other permits they have to get. And one is the watershed protection plan approval to prove that they are not going to have an impact to any of their neighbors as far as flooding and runoff is concerned.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. That's all I have there.
All right. Anyone else? Could you just give us a sentence or two about the alternative compliance?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Character District 5 zoning requires two-story buildings. It's just a basic requirement for that particular zoning district. And this applicant wanted to provide one-story buildings for their, I believe it's senior housing. I'm, I'm, I feel like I'm confusing this with one of the others. But they specifically wanted the one-story building so that way their tenants didn't have to go up and down the stairs. And there's a process by which you can request one-story buildings, which is the alternative compliance approved by Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. And those don't come to us? Those, Planning and Zoning Commission is the final.
Correct. When it's a height reduction, it does not come to y'all. If it's a height increase.
Got it.
It would come to y'all.
All right. Thank you very much. Council? Ms. Trevino, let's vote.
All right, Mr. Gleason, Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
No.
Okay. Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
And Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes, uh, five to one with one absent.
Okay. So now we are back to the four items from the consent agenda. So if you would read item one, please, Ms. Trevino.
Yes, consider pro-laborance 2023-79 on the second of two readings. Adopting Vision SMTX Comprehensive Plan as a Comprehensive Plan of the City of San Marcos, adopting the Preferred Scenario Map therein as a future land use map of the city. Repealing prior ordinances which adopted and amended the previous Comprehensive Plan, Vision San Marcos, A River Runs Through Us, and the associated Preferred Scenario Map designations and providing new associated designations from the Preferred Scenario Map, including procedural provisions and provide an effective date.
Okay, council, I'm looking for a motion on the comp plan.
Motion to postpone.
Second.
Okay. Uh, may I ask what the purpose of the postponement is? And also to the date certain to bring, we need a date certain to bring it back.
Right. Um, the rationale is because I don't feel prepared to make such a big decision, given that many of our neighbors reached out with very different perspectives. I think, generally speaking, a lot of our neighbors have expressed frustrations over the process, regardless of what kind of plan they're proposing. And I think that we should, uh, make an effort to have another community conversation or just kind of figure out how to get more, uh, of the facts out there. Because several of, like, the emails received kind of had some misunderstandings, like, interwoven within them as well. And so that's also a concern. And in terms of a date, I think that would be difficult right now. But if I could see, like, um, like, the rolling agenda or something, or there could be some staff input, I think that would help me better suggest something.
Okay. But exactly what is it that you're wanting to happen before it comes back?
I think having more community feedback. Um, I don't know what mechanism that, that would look like. But I think generally, I mean, we've devoted so much time, effort, and energy and money to this, but there still seems to be a fundamental lack of community- to be a fundamental lack of community awareness and opportunity for input, I think. I mean, even when it comes to, like, what the news has covered, it's been very partial. It's like not, it's not capturing, like, the fullness of the whole process, this, like, methods of engagement. And also, it's Monday, and there's just, like, so many barriers. I feel like, I feel like, I feel like y'all understand what I'm saying.
We do.
Like, I don't know, I have to, like, go down, like...
You explained it where I can understand it. I'm still getting input from my consensuents and...
Could you speak up a little, please, directly in the microphone?
I'm sorry, mayor. I was saying that I did understand what she just said. And I'm still getting input from my consensuents about this project, even though I voted against it last time, and I probably vote against it again. But more time for a project like this ain't going to hurt at all. And I think we ought to table this and just find out what we can and then make a decision.
You seconded it. Okay. I think, oh, may I let the city attorney address one thing real quick now and come right back to you, Mr. Prater? If you do it with a lighter touch, sometimes it works. Okay. We'll let y'all work on that.
Oh, just a quick procedural comment. If you have a motion to postpone and you don't indicate a date to what you postponed, it could have the effect of essentially tabling, almost acts as if it's tabling the items. So you may, the council may want to discuss if, what would happen if it is passed, what date, what meeting, or what...
Right.
You know, so that it doesn't just languish. Just wanted to suggest...
Could I make a suggestion to my...
Quick sort of timeframe or the next step, so it would...
Right.
Now let it just die on the line.
Could I make a suggestion to my colleagues here? How about January the 2nd? Is that enough time for us to...
Yeah. I think the holidays are going to have a big impact on that. I think a little bit more time would be more feasible for us to reach out and vice versa.
So are we looking to, should we have a committee then to kind of discuss? Because if we're just getting emails from everybody else, we're not getting together and saying, this is what I think. Should we have a, instead of just having this discussion all over again and get to the point where, let's table it again, should we have a committee to discuss, hey, this is what I've heard, and kind of work it out with a game plan?
I see Ms. Hernandez at the podium, and while y'all are thinking about what Mr. Mendoza said, I'll let you say what you need to say.
I just wanted to ask for clarification because Councilmember Gonzalez said that he voted against this item. He voted against the downtown plan, which is item number two, and on the comp plan, he voted in favor. So I just wanted to make sure that we are all talking about the comp plan. And if there are specific topics on the comp plan, I know we've heard quite a few and have that input, but that would be helpful for staff to have that specific direction about what you would like us to take back out if we do end up postponing this evening.
That's where I'm trying to go on this one. Go ahead, Ms. Garza.
Mayor, you can, I think you were, like, about to...
I need to go back to Mr. Prater if we've resolved the microphone situation.
Yeah. You know, I really don't want to postpone this, but there's just some final edits that we can make. And there's some concerns, you know, I addressed this last time about the missing middle, you know, is some of these edits towards the end going to affect those kind of developments with multiplexes, cottage courts? You know, we heard someone in public comment mention those concerns, accessory dwelling units, you know, like I said, I mentioned those concerns the last meeting, and, you know, I would have some amendments, some minor amendments to help address those concerns. But postponing it, you know, I'm not kind of the point now where we could just make some few more amendments to this. I think we're, you know, a lot of work's been put into this to get this to this point where it's at right now to go ahead and vote on it.
You have your amendments ready for this evening?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Okay. And I've got some that are not controversial, I think, but I've got a few cleanup things.
But are we going to decide on...
Well, the motion is to postpone right at this moment. So if we wanted to handle it tonight, or at least do further discussion, then we would be voting no to postpone. And then I'd be looking to see if there's a motion to discuss this this evening.
Got it.
But the motion now is to postpone.
Yeah.
And we don't have a date certain either.
Right. I think that one, January 2nd, would be, like, maybe to Ms. Garza's point after?
I can understand that. I just, I just threw it out there just to give a...
Right. So what day would that be after the 2nd?
That's on Monday. Oh, well, after that, let me look at my calendar.
And I appreciate your input, Mr. Prater. I think there's still little kinks to iron out when it comes to amendments. I had some kind of worked out, and I thought I was, you know, ready to make those. But given how much feedback we've received from our neighbors, like, and this is no, like, critique or shade towards our neighbors. I know that they're taking time out of their everyday life to provide the feedback, but a substantial amount of that feedback, whether it was phone calls, emails, text messages, was given, like, the last two days.
I understand.
And so I just personally don't feel prepared to, I honestly haven't even finished reading some of the emails. So I don't have a lot of confidence in those amendments that I had brainstormed.
I understand.
So that's kind of where I'm coming from. So I guess the date that I would propose would be January the 16th? I think that gives enough time to, if not, like, staff organized outreach. It gives me enough time as, like, a council person to go out and even, like, reply to some of my neighbors and ask for some clarifications on, like, what they meant with the feedback that they just recently gave me. I have a full-time job, so it was kind of difficult to sort through a bunch of comments like the last two days, so.
I'll second that. And I'd like to make another motion amendment to that. I can make a per motion, I can make amendment to the motion.
I'm not sure, but give it a try, and Mr. Gary will let you know.
I can.
I don't think you can do that with a...
You could, you can have a motion to amend the amendment.
Oh, just the amendment?
We don't have an amendment. There's just a motion to postpone right now.
Oh, that's true. Yes, it's the motion, yeah.
Which, I contend it's...
I'm sorry, you can then follow up with another...
Okay. Well, I was just going to say that the committee idea, I think, is a good idea, that we can work with staff, be able to bring what we're hearing in to staff, and then see what their counters are to understand both sides clearly, so.
This is why it's cleaner to just make a motion, get it on the table, and then you can make a motion to postpone or amend, et cetera. But that's the way the motion was made tonight. Can we add appoint a committee to a motion to postpone? Because that's, the deal is we're postponing to allow for something else to happen.
It's inevitable, that's going to be the next question, is what happens in the interim? So I think if there are no objections from the council, then I think it's appropriate if y'all want to tackle it with this one motion, you can do that.
Okay. So it's a motion to postpone and appoint a committee and, okay, that's the end of the motion. I need a, do I need a second? Are we just restating the original motion?
Restating the original motion with January 16th?
Are you okay with that, Ms. Garza? Yes, ma'am.
And...
And a committee.
Second.
Okay. So we have that on the table. So when would, if that passes, when would we appoint the committee? We just follow the motion and the vote on that? Because then we have to decide on who's going to be on the committee.
We can do that now.
I'm just trying to get my process right, whether we do it now or whether it's a second step after we vote.
I would suggest to take care of that and then appoint the committee to...
To see if we even want to postpone?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So what we have is a motion to postpone to January 16th of 2024? And that we appoint a council committee to work with staff to obtain more community input?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And, yeah, and, or just allow us a space where we can, like, sort through all the feedback we've received, yeah.
Okay. But you just know you're going to get a lot the day of the meeting, just, that's just going to happen, but...
I think there's so much community conversation that happened very recently that hopefully it'll continue so that folks will, you know, trickle it in before.
Okay. So we're going to vote on this. If it passes, then we will choose our committee members.
Yes, ma'am.
Got it. Okay. Ms. Trevino.
Right, Mayor Houston.
I went first last time. I think it's...
Mr. Gleason, but he's absent. And then you.
I'll go first.
I was, no, I was first, but that's okay.
I agree.
No pressure.
I can go first. I'm going to say yes.
Ms. Garza?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason. Okay. Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
So it didn't matter, okay.
Yeah.
So now we are looking for committee members.
I'll volunteer.
And I volunteer also.
Mr. Gary, does the fact that I was on this other committee, does that become a factor in this?
Not, not as a legal issue at all, not at all.
Okay. So...
Whatever the council's pleasure is.
So our volunteers are Mr. Scott, Mr. Mendoza. But I would volunteer. I've got so many hours invested in this now. What's another 50? Anyone else want to be on it?
I couldn't make time. Yeah, really, I will, I could find time somewhere.
You want to be on it?
Yes.
I'd be willing to give up my seat if Mrs. Garza would like to have it instead. It's up to you.
I would really appreciate it.
I think fresh eyes on it would be really good. Because I haven't got feedback.
Then I'll give up mine.
It's up to you.
What's that?
I'll give up mine.
It's up to you.
You can keep him ahead, but, yeah.
So what are we doing? We're trying to figure out who the three are going to be. Gotcha. You want to be on it?
Yeah, I can make time.
You're a volunteer, and we can't have four, so I could step off?
I'd rather be on something else right now. If you'd like to take over this, I completely understand.
Okay. So it looks like our volunteers, who are not having to be voluntold, which is a good thing, are Mr. Scott, myself, and Ms. Garza. Last call. So we will vote on the volunteers for this committee?
To make a motion. I'm going to make a motion to let, oh, we need to do that, ma'am, thank you.
Yep. We'll take your motion, and I'm looking for a second. Second from Mr. Mendoza. Ms. Trevino.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prater?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason? Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
So, Mr. Gary, we have disposed of item one for this evening, I believe.
Yes, ma'am, that takes care of it. January 16th is what it looks like.
Okay, sports fans, it is at 7:24. We generally take a break every 90 minutes, and I'm pretty sure we're not going to finish the next one in six minutes. So we will take a break. We will start again at 7:34 by, I'm sorry, 7:35 by that clock up there.
Amanda, I just want to, I stand corrected, you are correct.
We have returned from our break. It is 7:35, and we are at item two.
Consider Pearl of Resolution 2023-168, or approving the downtown area plan, including a focus on historic and cultural character, parking, public amenities, streetscape enhancements, and housing, and declare an effective date.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion on item two.
Motion to postpone.
Okay.
Oh, I know we just went to this.
We're not going to do that.
Okay.
Postpone is actually a, I think it's called subsidiary motion. We need to get this on the table first, and you saw how convoluted it kind of got on the last one. So what we need is a motion to get it on the table. Doesn't mean you have to vote for it. Doesn't mean we can't postpone it secondarily. But I'd like to get a motion just to get this on the table. It'll make the rest of it so much easier.
Right. And then it'll be postponement of the pending motion.
Yeah.
It's a consideration of that motion.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Okay. So we've got a motion from Mr. Mendoza. I'm looking for a second. Was that a motion to approve?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Second from Mr. Prater, and now it is on the floor. And now we can discuss, and we might want to have some discussion about it. And then we might want to postpone it or not. We'll wait and see.
I can wait, yes, absolutely.
Counsel, thoughts, considerations, concerns on the downtown plan? If not, I can go first. Are you ready?
Basically, I was just going to talk about the same thing that Mrs. Garza said also. We've received a lot of emails the last couple of days, but I actually went out and spoke to some of these other neighborhoods, and I think that, well, that there's something else we can do.
I, and I'll take Ms. Garza's words and repeat them. I think that, and we're down, I think, option one, two, and three about the CMLM plan is pretty much all that's in contention. And that's something that I think we need further discussion, further thought, further analysis, what really makes sense. I've got an idea for a completely different graphic that might, it would present my ideas more, so that would be to see if y'all wanted to amend it. But I do think that some more analysis on tax base, et cetera, would be helpful to our decision on what we're going to do.
Yes, ma'am.
And how we go about that. I'm not sure if we need a committee or what we need to do there. Or is there anything in particular, somebody's got some amendments in their hip pocket that they're ready to bring forward? Mr. Prater?
Yeah, I heard a comment about, like, the type of concrete where water can go through.
Pervious?
You know, like, do we, like, so option three, you know, like, for example, like where Broadway Bank used to be, there's some very mature pecan trees, you know? And so how do we, you know, kind of further articulate the option three option, like, you know? And also, is it building standards or is it flex control methods? Is it extending what we've done as a city on CMLM between University and Hopkins, incorporating, you know, the landscaping, the wastewater, not the wastewater, the stormwater? You know, so, you know, like, and as you mentioned also, the tax considerations, you know, like, so, you know, I think, you know, we could develop this and work on this more. But, you know, I like the option three. I think option three really encapsulates what San Marcos desires, green space and everything else. I think, you know, we can have our cake and eat it too with option three.
Yeah. And of course, we recognize that option one was a representation of what is entitled now. And so I know we know that, but I just didn't want to get past this without acknowledging that, that that's what can happen now. The rest is a vision, and it's an ask. But my thought process, I'll just speak for myself, is when I saw that there would probably be more housing downtown, it was, but we need some amenities, we need something. We need, and our rivers are pretty much with, between us and tourists and everybody else, they're pretty much overflowing the banks now with people. And in that we needed something to expand our river parks. But even I know that that's not going to happen in that whole green swath as it was on option two. Not criticizing staff for making that graphic, just I realized that that's not going to Not criticizing staff for making that graphic, just I realized that that's not gonna happen most likely without an influx of money. But even if we had money to buy that land, we're still losing the tax base. So I think this really deserves a more, more analysis as to what to do. Personally, I'd like to do a little bit between two and three somehow, but I think it's gonna take a lot of thought, and this is incredibly important to our community, so.
May I ask a quick question?
Please, please do.
I had a little light bulb when you said that it seems like we're down to options one, two, and three, and it's very specific to the CMLM properties.
Mm-hmm.
That comprises two pages and a little bit of here and there in the, in the downtown plan.
Mm-hmm.
What if we take out the CMLM district completely and put that kind of aside to be its own study, and not tie it to everything else and all the good work that we've done in the downtown plan?
And then amend the downtown plan?
Just, there would be no-
Six months from now or something?
Or just have a separate plan.
Would that be like a river district?
Separate analysis.
Would it be like a-
Potentially, and we could go all the way down CMLM, all of the property that's privately owned, obviously not that that's owned by the university. But, you know, one of our speakers lives south of the railroad tracks, which isn't part of the downtown plan. It'll be part of the, you know, one of the next area plans, the south of downtown area plan. But maybe we, we kind of break out the CMLM frontage, knowing that it's important for a variety of reasons, and study that separately outside of the downtown plan.
I'm thinking there might be an option four before all is said and done, but, but that, that sounds, um, I, I, I can accept that so we don't hold up the downtown plan any longer, since this is the one thing that, that we're discussing. I don't know how much might affect the rest of it, not just taking the text out, but how much more might be dependent on it, maybe not. Um, but also, I think it would be good to have this part of CMLM considered with the, the other plan is south of downtown, and when is it coming up?
I think it's going to kickstart in spring of twenty-four. Yes, we have three plans that are in process at the moment, so it'll start as those start to come through for adoption.
Yeah, okay. Um, I think that actually makes sense, and maybe, maybe pull CMLM out of that one too before we're done, 'cause this is incredibly important. Okay, um, if we table this right now, which tabling is for the same meeting, and we wait till after we've done some other things, is it possible that y'all could come up with the chapter and verse of a motion that I could make to remove these different segments, like the, the page numbers and the paragraphs, and then we could complete it this evening?
I saw a head nod from Andrea, who I was looking for, for confirmation, so.
Who I was looking at too, okay. Um, council, are y'all good with that? Okay, then I will make a motion to table this item till later in the evening, and it may be the last thing we do tonight, but I need to give staff however much time they need, 'cause there's not a whole lot left in the-
Second.
Okay, so we have a, a motion to table this till later in the evening. Uh, Mr. Scott has seconded it, so let's vote on that, Ms. Trevino.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Um, aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason, and Mayor Houston.
Aye.
And Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna come back to two, but we are now at ten?
Aye.
Oh, yeah. Would you read item five?
Consider approval of, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash one seventy-one, or approving the purchase of seventy Bolo wraps with associated cartridges and equipment for the San Marcos Police Department in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Authorizing city manager or her designate to execute the appropriate documents to complete the purchase and declare an effective date.
Okay, I need a motion to get this on the table.
So moved.
Uh, I will give that to, uh, Mr. Prather, who down here did the second, was that, I'll give the, Mr. Gonzalez the second on that one. Ms. Garza.
Thank you. So, uh, just a little bit about the rationale. I think, um, given multiple incidents of police conduct that were only brought to light because neighbors pushed for it and brought it to light, um, given the successful community-led ballot initiative calling on this council to repeal the police contract, and given the results from our community survey that illustrates that our neighbors distrust local government, it's imperative that expenditures like this be given proper attention and education. So some things that I noted in my research on these devices, um, other communities held committee discussions and demonstrations when proposing, um, uh, the implementation and further purchase of items like this. Um, other communities have included the policies and procedures that outline specifically when and why this type of device would be deployed. Um, but beyond that, I found it really interesting that a message board of law enforcement officers, so they're like replying to each other, right, um, have comments like this, which is, "I've seen it used in the field under the circumstances, you see in those promotional videos. This guy was in a fighting position, standing still, one hand about chest high and fist, and the other hand was by his waist. The wrap ran around both arms around the upper part of the bicep. He was able to pull his higher arm out and use that arm to pull away the wrap and free his other two arms. Um, the officers there didn't even have time to close in and tackle him before he freed himself." These things flat out do not work, even under the most generous circumstances. It still doesn't work. A lot of those ec- a lot of comments from other law enforcement officers echoed that. Um, uh, yeah, our whole training unit tested them and ended the, the day in tears laughing. You can literally just walk out of them. Um, the only way they're even minimally effective is if you're standing bolt upright, motionless, with your feet touching. But other folks did say it was, like, kinda mixed, it just kinda depended on the, the situation. And so, given all of that, I just, I can't, like, wrap, no pun intended, wrap my head around supporting this. I didn't see any attached, like, information on the rationale. Um, I, I also downloaded the packet really early on, so I might have missed it. But, yeah, just open to any response from you, chief.
The control room.
There we go. All right, good. I give you, Mayor, council, stand in standards, please, chief. For the benefit of our citizens and our council, let me just, uh, explain holistically, then I'll drill down into the multitude of questions you posed.
There's two questions.
What specifically is being asked is that council approved the purchase of seventy, seven-zero, the quantity, Bolo Wrap one fifty, less lethal, remote restraint devices. These are devices that are used to de-escalate persons experiencing mental health crisis or narcotics-induced psychosis or other criminal behavior. They are a non-lethal device, and the very unique thing about this device is the fact that it does not rely on pain compliance. The other tools on my Batman belt do rely on pain compliance to change behavior. This one does not. It specifically is a small instrument that's about this size that shoots out a seven-and-a-half-feet Kevlar tether. So if you can think of Wonder Woman and the lasso, it's gonna shoot the lasso out. It's seven-and-a-half feet long, and on the end are two small treble hooks, so that eventually, when it hits the person, it wraps immediately, and then the tether attaches to the clothing to keep the person restrained, so that we can then move up to move into an apprehension mode. Again, this is a very good device for mental health crisis, narcotics-induced psychosis, and/or other criminal behavior. Now, you made reference, Councilwoman Garza, to the meet-and-confer contract. I don't think anybody here can draw a correlation between meet-and-confer and the use of this device. Meet-and-confer is specific to labor conditions, salaries, hiring procedures, et cetera. Meet-and-confer does not govern use of force.
The rationale to push for the repeal of the police contract was directly related to, um, the killing of, um, Pam Watts. So I, Jennifer Miller, so do you?
I still don't, I would not draw a correlation. I'll move on to the other point. You cited an example where you read on what I presume would be a message board communicated by other police officers that they cited a specific example where one person was able to free his arm before the apprehension could be taken. I'll just tell you that this non-lethal device is presumed to be about eighty percent effective.
Mm-hmm.
No tool on my belt is a hundred percent effective, to include my firearm. No tool is one hundred percent effective. So I'm not gonna tell you that the Bolo Wrap is the panacea, but I'll tell you, I would take an eighty percent chance of success versus having to use a higher level of force. The Bolo Wrap is not force. The Bolo Wrap is a restraint device. So I want you to think about it this way. If we win, we come, 'cause literally every day we're coming into contact people who may have mental health crisis, we have a couple of options. We can use force to take civil custody, or we could use a Bolo Wrap that's not force and is eighty percent effective. To me, that's, that's a no-brainer. We do that every time.
Where are you getting this eighty percent eff- efficacy rate?
Go to the website, Bolo Wrap.
So the people who have an economic interest in promoting their efficacy are the ones that are saying that it's eighty percent effective?
Yes, and I can tell you just from practical experience with the taser as an example. The taser could probably be anywhere from forty to seventy percent effective. Forty percent, especially in inclement weather, 'cause of bulky jackets, the two probes don't make nus- neuromuscular incapacitation. So the taser can be as low of a threshold as forty percent. Bolo Wrap, as much as eighty percent. I'll take that chance.
Sounds like one more tool in our, uh, police officer's belt.
Mayor, could I add one thing to that? Chase Stapp, Assistant City Manager, uh, Councilwoman Garza, to the point of that post on that message board. I guess I would offer, if, if, if that officer tried that and it was not successful, what have we lost?
A lot of money. This is an expensive maybe, right? And beyond the fact that we didn't have more community outreach to explain to our neighbors that we're spending quite a bit of money on these tools, which I find wholly problematic, the, there's reviews of people who are law enforcement officers who are saying, like, this thing is trash. Um, and that's concerning to me, right? So even beyond the, oh, this always just wants the community input, a little, that whole thing, like, the efficacy is, is, is problematic. I think we seldom just go writing these checks to things with having, without having thoughtful conversations on, is this the best place to put our money? Um, that, that's, that's-
I, I understand, and just, there, there's no other product on the market like this one that does what it does. We have hosted demos here and viewed it ourself.
Hmm.
And I guess my point is, yes, they are expensive. What, what, what does it cost the city if we use a higher level of force than is necessary and injure a person? That's very expensive as well.
Um, I'm just, I just, I just think it's, it's interesting how we pick and choose when we want to unpack when we're spending money. Um, and then just generally, it's like, um, maybe, mental health responses shouldn't be a policing issue, right?
Maybe your police chief would completely agree with you. However, until that system is ultimately built, people still call nine-one-one.
Right.
And consequently, in the city of San Marcos, they still get a peace officer and an embedded mental health clinician when she's on duty. So we are making strides to do exactly what you would advocate, but that is a very expensive solution that's not done yet.
Hi, Chief, I hear you're coming out. Um, I, I understand now, since, uh, December of last year, SAGINE has had these devices. They've actually had, it looks like seventy-three of them. Are you aware of BUTA, Corpus Christi, have they also followed suit, um?
The only agency that I know that's here is the Hayes County Sheriff's Office. They also have them. I have not heard about BUTA.
Have you, um, from the Hayes County Sheriff's here, have there been any issues that you're aware of, of, um, these devices being used, if they are used, causing any kind of injuries to anybody, um, that they're trying to be non-lethal to?
I'm aware of injuries associated with pricks that require a Band-Aid to shoot, uh, cover up where the treble hook may have caught skin.
Okay.
And they literally put a Band-Aid. In fact, I've been to actual, um, live, uh, displays of this, and the only injury I have experienced is a minor nick from the treble hook put a Band-Aid on there.
Thank you.
For the purpose of transparency, I wanna quickly say, for the entire year of twenty twenty-two, let's put everything in perspective, we had about sixty-five thousand, five hundred citizen contacts, over sixty-five thousand citizen contacts. How many times did we use force? Fifty-nine times. So let's, let's keep everything in perspective. Fifty-nine times out of sixty-five thousand, five hundred engagements with our citizens tells me that we have a very judicious use of force in the city. We also have a use-of-force policy that was fully reviewed by this council and adopted with the support of a council committee that you all appointed and that I worked with when I first got here. And so for perspective, going to what Chief Stapp said, fifty-nine uses of force. One of them can be very, very expensive. You would expect me, as your police chief, to come to you and tell you, this is a way of potentially mitigating and reducing risk. That's exactly what I'm telling you.
Reducing and mitigating the risk that you basically implied doesn't necessarily exist, since we're already doing a good job, and with only fifty-nine uses of force?
No. I would, I, in fact, I said earlier, we contact persons in mental health crisis and/or narcotics-induced psychosis and/or other criminal behavior every day in the city of San Marcos. Having said that, we have a remarkable track history of being very judicious with the use of force. This is a less lethal restraint device that's designed to de-escalate. All of us should be on board with de-escalation, I would think.
I have a couple of questions. What is the, uh, training curve on, on this to make sure that we are? Sorry, I've gotta cough drop, so don't cough. Um, to make sure that we're using them effectively? Because I'm thinking maybe some of the failures in other places was they were not using them correctly? What's the training time on this? And, um, and to ensure that this doesn't instill a false sense of security that we've, we've done this and we may still need to do something else, so we need, so we've got that mind, mindset.
Right.
That's my question to you. I'm sure you've thought of those things. I'm just, if you would tell all of us, please.
Sure, I think it's important to note that, uh, retired police commander, San Marcos Police Commander Terry Nichols is actually the director of training for Wrap Technologies specifically for this device. And you should know that the train the trainer is a minimum of seven hours, and then the operator's course will be between two to four hours.
Thank you. What are, oh, sorry, go ahead, it's all. Turn your microphone on.
And if we had, uh, some kind of demonstration you can give us, or I can make up my own mind, okay, I can see what happens here, and I can see what happens with the taser, uh, it would just help me quite a bit. Uh, is that possible to get something?
I, I just got online and watched the videos of how these things work.
Right.
Yeah, there's a ton of, my only concern, 'cause I contemplated that, my only concern is, it's still a firearm. It's still a discharge within municipal, municipal facility. Every one of you would need to have eye protection, 'cause I don't want anything to go wrong, and we're still shooting at a person. I think a lot of our citizens would probably actually object to that. So I thought about that too, but then I thought, hey, this is a publicly traded company with a pretty robust website. They have hundreds of videos that you can review, and so I thought, it's probably better to let you review this at your own leisure versus actually using it inside the council chamber.
Y'all, uh, there's several companies that do this. This is just this one company.
No, this is actually the sole proprietor. They have, I think, twenty-two patents on this. Nobody else has been able to do this.
Right, and the negative parts of this, uh, page or whatever you wanna call it, what's the negative, uh, points of this?
I think Councilwoman Garza expressed it. It's not a taser. Please know that it's just a remote restraint device. The negative component would be, she said, it's not a hundred percent effective. Your chief is quickly agreeing, it's not a hundred percent, nor is anything on my Batman belt. It's about eighty percent effective according to the empirical studies. And so, to me, that's the negative. The other negative is clearly it comes at a cost. But as Chief Stapp pointed out, the alternative can be a whole lot more costly.
A lawsuit can-
Oh, yeah, one lawsuit can easily exceed this cost.
Right, yeah.
I have a question. I now know who to, who to ask. Ms., Ms. Reyes, the chief, uh, city attorney. Would it be permissible to just, uh, run a video of, from this company to show how they work? 'Cause it, it's different from what my impression was of how it worked, and so that's what I did. Is that something that we could do? I, I went to the, I Googled the company. I think it's a, a video from the company that we're seeking to do business with.
Yeah, I hate to put Mr. Meagle on the spot. That's about the only way I would see to do it, would be through the computer that's running.
Yeah, that, yes, that's the only way that we have, and I wish I'd thought of that while we were still discussing. Um, because that is putting folks on the spot, but I thought if it can help folks with their decision, that would be good. Mr. Mendoza?
Uh, no, please, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, uh, I wasn't quite done yet. Uh.
Did the video stuff?
Wait a minute. Oh, here it is. You can see it here, too.
So you can see, actually, you really can't see. You can't see the actual deployment. It moves so fast. Seven and a half feet. It's a dead-end tether. You can't strain legs or upper extremities.
Kind of like, okay.
Once you're under the power of the tether, that's when the officer is trained to move up in handcuff. Yeah, the problem is the propensity for that with a taser or strikes or a canine are exponentially higher. This actually reduces the risk of a fall. That's a great point, and I'm glad you said that. Yeah.
And thank you to Mr. Meagle for finding the video. And I, Mr. Mendoza, I'll call on you, but I did too soon earlier. Mr. Gonzalez wasn't finished, so.
I'm finishing now, I'll check it out.
Okay, all right. Mr. Mendoza, I can come back to you if you think of something else.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if this matters to any of my colleagues or anybody watching at home, but Columbia County and Oregon, out of Oregon, it's where Portland actually sits in the center of that county. Who, I mean, let's just be honest, that tends to be an area where they are very observant and they want a lot of visibility and interactions with our first responders and authority. Columbia, as about six hours ago, their Fox station just released a report saying that Columbia County Sheriff's Department has been using this for the last two weeks and it's been successful. And if Columbia County, Oregon, finds this to be suitable, and I'm sure they didn't just...
For the, for how long?
For about, looks like it's been for six days now. But I'm sure they've taken months to, I mean, this is Oregon. I mean, this is somebody that I would imagine would just be drunkenly tossing it up there. I mean, I'm seeing everywhere news reports that people are trying this. I'm just throwing it out there that there are, not just Texas cities, but other cities around the nation that are using this.
Yeah.
So one of my original concerns was the fact that there's other communities who have contemplated whether or not to buy this. They included like the policies and procedures that outline specifically when and why this type of device would be deployed. Where can we find that for here, for wanting to use this?
We haven't developed the policy because that's putting the car before the horse. Because I needed your permission to purchase them and then eventually we're going to adopt the policy and then purchase them. And then we have to go through the training. I suspect in the training, we're going to learn a lot of the best practices. So at that point, we would codify the policy. More specifically amend the existing use of force policy.
That's an interesting approach. And then I guess one other question. Have you seen these deployed live?
Repeatedly, yes.
So one of the comments, which is like a reoccurring theme, was like the only way they're even minimally effective is if you're standing bolt upright, motionless with your feet touching right. But this is the comment that's also interesting. They also sound like gunshots, which is a hundred percent not a sound you want to make in a less than lethal force encounter. Another one is like, I personally think they're a waste of money, but whether they work or not, they sound like a gunshot and that always scares the, out of suspects. So it's a no-go for me, is what the officer said. Are they as loud as gunshots? Would you...
As loud, no. I did not wear hearing protection inside the DPS Academy. I've been through multiple actual scenarios and I did not wear hearing protection. But I always wear hearing protection when I shoot firearms.
Especially inside.
Yeah. Well, I'm still going to be a no. I think also something that we can take on in CJR is talking about what types of education we expect whenever we make these big expenditures. I think that would be more inclusive and considerate of our neighbors. Yeah, I, when we talk about the Batman belt, it's cool when Batman uses it, but it's absolutely garbage in the field. We have some guys field testing them and we have not had a single successful deployment. So that's another perspective. But I just thought it was cute that they also use the Batman belt, little metaphor. But I'm going to be no. I think mental health shouldn't be a policing issue. And depending on the police as a costly and dangerous substitute for funding a functioning mental health system and every dollar spent towards putting things, even if they're less than lethal weapons, should be done in a very intentional and thorough manner. And so I'm a no, and that's all I have to say.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I guess charging, are they charged daily, weekly? How often is those batteries, how long do they last if they are batteries?
It is battery operated, and that's actually a good question. I don't know the answer. It's not a rechargeable battery. It's a replaced battery. And you don't have to do any type of tests like you do with the taser. We test our taser on a weekly basis. And so those have to be recharged consistently. This one is very different. But to directly answer your question as to how often, I don't know.
Right, okay. And you said you need it seventy? And this is just for our PD officers or is it also for the marshals and everybody else?
It's a great question. Honestly, the seventy is not sufficient. We have an authorized sworn strength of one hundred and twenty-three. The seventy is inclusive of those assigned to patrol, the school resource officers, the mental health unit, and traffic. That's it. Not people like me, not detectives, not anybody else. Because of the costs involved, we had to do approaches incrementally. So this is just what I consider a uniformed presence.
Is there any way we can find out how long those batteries do last? I mean, I would hate to be more for the batteries than for the item itself. I've seen that happen something every now and then, not here, but in other places.
Yeah, I would imagine the batteries are going to be comparable to like the CR. How, what is it, the twenty-twenty-threes, the little round ones that you put in your garage door openers? Those types of batteries? Because this is a pretty small device itself. It's not, it's not big.
That's all I have, thank you.
You're welcome.
One more tool in their belts. And I imagine the reason why this is on our agenda versus like if you're purchasing radios or new cars is because it is a non-lethal tool. And is that why it's on the agenda?
No, because it's over the hundred thousand dollar threshold.
It looks like another tool for law enforcement officers to keep them safe, keep our community safe, especially when they're in interactions that require de-escalation and non-lethal measures.
I think, I think it's a great, to answer your questions, it's two years on the battery life depending on how much it's used.
Thank you.
Keith, I have just one more question. Do your mental health officers, do all of them have lethal and non-lethal weapons or do they only carry non-lethal?
No, they have lethal and non-lethal.
Okay.
They have the taser, OC pepper spray, batons, and then of course firearms.
And this is, like you said, another tool that would be used for this particular group itself? Okay, thank you.
Right, and on that note, you know, I'm sensitive to what Councilwoman Garza said. It's interesting, though, that when it comes to that paradigm, we get frustrated with law enforcement because it's still a law enforcement response. Well, my submission to everybody, everybody, and that's inclusive of the community, we're all stakeholders. If we want to change the system, then we have to change the system. Law enforcement is not the impediment, not the obstacle to making that happen. Law enforcement says, okay, let's do it. We're ready.
I have one more comment. I just think that's an interesting comment, given that the vast majority of our budget goes to law enforcement. I think if there was a true commitment to taking on mental health, we would have a more for-real conversation during the budget process. And that's all. I'm going to stop because I'm getting upset.
Mr. Trevino, let's vote.
All right, Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Frather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason, Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
No, and I don't want to hear nobody crying when we get sued.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I usually don't like spending money, but in this case, I think it's something that's going to be beneficial to everybody in San Marcos.
Motion passes five-two-one with one upset.
Okay, and now I believe that we are on to item ten. Am I correct?
Yes.
All right.
Consider pro-ordance twenty-twenty-three dash eighty-two on the first of two readings, amending chapter fourteen of the San Marcos City Code by adding a new Article Four that adapts local amendments to International Property Maintenance Code requiring the artistic boarding up of vacant structures, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing a savings clause, and provide an effective date.
Mayor Council, Greg Carr, Director of Neighborhood Enhancement. We've had a good conversation about this at a work session. And this is just bringing the item before you. There was the question, Mayor, from the question and answer board. So this, on second reading, there is a resolution that goes with this to adopt the standards. But that'll come with the second reading so that we're not adopting something that we may not approve.
Okay, all right, thank you. We had a wonderful discussion on this. I am very excited about this. I think it's going to make our community look so much better. And with that, I need to get a motion from somebody so we can move forward. Thank you, Mr. Trevino.
Second.
A motion from Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Let's vote.
All right, Mr. Frather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason, Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six-two-zero with one upset.
All right, item eleven.
Consider pro-ordance twenty-twenty-three dash one-seventy-four R, awarding a construction contract to Santa Clara Construction LTD for the Sunset Acres Neighborhood Improvement Phase One project in the estimated amount of one million six hundred forty-two thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. authorize city manager or designate to execute the contract on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Most to approve.
Motion from Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Are there any questions?
One question.
Okay.
I talked to the city manager earlier today and I asked a question. Was there any penalties involved if they don't finish in a timely fashion? You probably have the answer for us, Mayor.
Yes, our contracts do have timeliness clauses in them. So that is something that we have addressed with our contracts to make sure that it does have that. And Mr. Condor, I don't know if you are, there he is, he's online, just to make sure that you kind of speak to the specifics for this one.
Yes, every contract does have liquidated damages and this contract does have liquidated damages. I don't know that a dollar amount off the top of my head, but it's typically in the range of eight hundred to a thousand dollars a day should they fall behind.
Well, it's good to know a lot of our citizens are concerned about projects that take quite a while. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Trevino, let's vote.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason, Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Long overdue, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Frather?
Aye.
Motion passes six-two-zero with one upset.
Mr. Trevino, let's move on to item twelve.
Discusses, consider appointments to fill vacancies on the following boards and commissions and provide direction to staff, A, Convention and Visitors Bureau, B, Library, C, Parking Advisory Board.
Okay, so staff, we will go through these one by one. Convention and Visitors Bureau, there is a position for Texas State Athletics. And they have provided the name of Don Coriel. I'll put that name in play and so we will need to vote. But on this one, it's one for one, so you can just say yes or no.
Mr. Gleason, Mayor Houston?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Garza?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Frather?
Abstained due to my wife's employment, Texas State.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
Aye.
And yeah, motion passes six, five-two-zero with one upset.
Next, for, still for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, is hotel and motel industry rep with ninety or more rooms. There is one slot. I think this is the first time I've ever seen more than one name in play. So I'm looking for one of these names or both and we can vote on them.
This is a hotel?
Uh, yes, hotel with ninety or more rooms. Not to be confused with those with less than. I guess we have that.
Where's, where's the, in the packet?
The applications came to you last...
Separate email.
Friday, I think. Yeah.
So it's Carla and then the other one is, who else?
Uh, Janetta Frazier. And they're with different hotels. Let's see, Janetta is with... Residence Inn, yes. And Carla Sanchez is with Fairfield. Okay, I will put the name of Carla Sanchez forward. But both applications looked good, so.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Sanchez.
Then we will vote and there's one name put forward, so this will be a yes or no.
Mayor Houston?
I went first last time, but that's okay.
I can say yes.
Please, and Ms. Garza?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Frather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Okay, and still with the CVB, hotel and motel representative of the Embassy Suites Hotel and San Marcos Conference Center. And we have one name put forward, Louis Nunez. And who is the Director of Sales and Marketing, and I will put that name forward. Of course, we can still have other names. I'm not seeing other names jumping up, so, Mr. Trevino?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're doing library board?
No, we're doing the third CVB one.
The Embassy, the government, it's just the one, right?
The Embassy Suites, yeah, one for one.
Yeah.
And the person's name is Luis Nunez.
Sounds good.
So we'll go around the table on that one.
Ms. Garza?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Frather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason, Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Okay.
And now we're to library. There is one slot open and we've got five applications. One, two, three, four. Four were in the packet. There's one that was not in the packet.
Probably Andrews.
Uh-huh. Maybe they didn't qualify, did a residency or something else.
Right.
Sometimes that happens. Okay. Anyone?
I have a recommendation for library.
Yes, ma'am.
Charles Sears.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any others? His application looked good, as did some of the others.
Yeah, they were all really good. That's it, yeah.
And we've been doing very well with the applications lately. Okay, then the name of Charlie, Charles Sears, has been put forward. So unless anybody has anything different, let's vote on Charles Sears for the library board.
Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Frather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason, Mayor Houston?
Aye.
And Ms. Garza?
Aye.
And Parking Advisory Board, we have one application. I believe we have two slots open, but I think we're still working on those. And we've got next week, we meet next week because of Thanksgiving holidays. The meeting was pushed up. So I would like to put the name of Lauren Micketton. Micketton, Medikin, in play. And that is one for one. And if you've got another person, if not, this will be a yes or no.
Mr. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Frather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason? Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
On to item thirteen.
Hold discussion regarding former employee participation in city issues and provide direction to the city manager.
Okay, yeah, I've, we have a case now where we have a, and I just closed my packet, didn't mean to. A former employee who is abiding by what our rules are. But I will, I will tell you that I didn't exactly know what the rules are. And I was getting calls and looked at... getting calls and looked it up and went, yep, everything's okay, but I'm hearing from neighbors that they're concerned that those rules should be stronger. And so I decided to put it on the agenda. I'm going to put out there, perhaps we might want to refer this to our Ethics Review Commission, might be a place for them to, I know that they generally research, look and see what other, other cities do, and I, I personally would welcome that input, so checking to see what y'all would like to do. The, what the current code is, is in your packet, that's what's current.
Uh-huh.
Two years, right? Yeah, it's two years already.
And the City Manager can, if, you know, we need to bring in a former engineer to help us with our
Former engineer?
There was a provision there about
Wrong, item 13.
The subsection should not apply to a former city employee whose employment was terminated by force reduction, or a former employee's skills or experience are so unique that failure to contract with him or would be detrimental to the city is determined by the City Manager.
That's what the rule is now.
But, but in that particular case, Ms. Reyes, would that mean that we are employing that person in some shape or fashion?
I'm gonna ask
Yes, I think the distinction is that, and again, this provision, I think the concern under the provision you're talking about, Mayor, is when they're advocating on behalf of
Yeah.
a private party before one of our boards or commissions or the council.
That's, that's the section.
Versus, you know, where there's a special circumstance where we need somebody's expertise.
Right. And I wouldn't take that away either.
Right, I mean, 'cause sometimes you have people who have longer tenures, who've been with the city for a long time, and you are looking for a, you know, a easier transition, so that would be a circumstance, but this is really specific to people who come and represent them, you know, and advocate for something at a board or commission meeting, i.e. council or P and Z.
That was my concern, what the, the internal business part that's under Ms. Reyes, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the way that one is.
So we don't have this restriction? This is a proposed?
No, that's what the restriction is now, but it's very short, and it's, it's specific.
Well, the, the specific circumstance that has been brought up several times, it says, and Sam, Mr. Gueda, you can help me in terms of what the exact language is, but basically, it's only to the Board or Commission that that particular employee used to work with directly. And so, so that would be, in that case, that would have been a different Board or Commission, not the City Council. And so that's where there's not that, so if, if that's what the council's intent is, and that's what y'all would like to make sure that that's clarified to everybody, that's that, that hole that's in there.
I would like it to be broader, that if you're, if you're not gonna represent, not focus it to one particular board, you're just not gonna represent, 'cause if that board's recommendations come to us, I, I don't know, I just, I just think it should be stricter, and that's in my opinion, but
What, and it's also just more simple, like, no, if you work for the city for two years, you can't come, you know, it's
And the other thing, Mayor, was the, the, also part of that restriction, I believe, was that currently you would be allowed to still interact with city staff on behalf of the developer, so really, the prohibition was just before one of the boards. So those are things that the Commission could look at if it was the desire of the council, or leave it, leave it as is.
And there's a lot of us that thought it was two years, no contact, I don't know if that's what it used to be, or if that's what it is someplace else, but that's why the eyebrows were raised and went, no, it's, it's per the code, everything's, you know, legit, but they were going, well, then it, then that, the rules should change.
That's correct, there was no, just, yeah, to be clear, there was no prob, uh, no violation in this instance.
Your thoughts?
What are yours?
That if, if they've, if they're an ex-employee, especially somebody who had a very significant position, that there should be some time lapse between the time that they're, they will come in and address us.
How much?
Two years. I think we just go with what the code, yeah.
Two years?
Yeah. I'd like to hear with the Ethics Commission.
That, that's why I want to send it to the Ethics Commission. I don't know what other cities do, we're not trying to make a final decision here, but we could maybe give them some direction. I'd, I'd really like to just let them look at it.
I don't like it when generals go work at Boeing after they leave the Air Force, so, yeah.
There you go. Other thoughts?
Yeah.
Ms. Garza.
I don't know the rationale either way, like, I, I think the folks of the Ethics Commission enjoy unpacking things like this, they might be able to present something strong either way, but I, I couldn't tell you, I mean, I, I see both sides generally.
But are we good with sending this to the Ethics Review Commission and see what comes back?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, we're all yeses on that one, uh, and if there's nothing else, we'll move on to item 14. Ms. Trevino.
Hold discussion regarding area plan adoption process and provide direction to the City Manager.
Okay, our area plans are really important to the future of our city. The comp plan has, there's multiple times it is going to appear before the council, but because the way our rules are Sorry, but because the way our rules are now, uh, the, the comp plan is adopted by ordinance, which means at least two readings, and we have the one before that and all that. Uh, area plans are by resolution, which means it's one time before council, I just think it ought to be at least two, and so how we do that, one would be a public hearing, um, you know, we can do a public hearing and a vote, but then it's, and then a second one time in front of council with a, no public hearing and a vote. You know how there's some things we do at CDBG and some others where we have a public hearing, and it's just a public hearing, and we listen to everyone, and then it's at the next meeting, or the next meeting it's on our, that it's gonna be on our agenda, that we have our full discussion and vote. So I'm just trying to figure out if, if anybody else would like to make sure that this happens at at least two council meetings for our area plans, 'cause we have how many coming up? Thank you.
Six, 'cause we're going to a job for right now.
Right. Yeah. There, there, there's more plans to come. So this, this has to do with just process.
I don't have a problem with it, 'cause it gives us a chance to re-go through this again, but I'm fine with that, I, I'm more than happy for the visibility also.
Public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe discussion, the second time it comes before us, would be a vote, without a public hearing. Mr. Gonzalez, I'm seeing, yes, Ms. Garza, I can come back if you like, given
What you just said is what you put on the background information, right?
Um, yes.
Items, important plans be on the agenda twice in order to allow for more input, so like a two-meeting process?
I think it should come before us at least twice, 'cause sometimes it takes the first time to get people's attention, it gets in the newspaper, and then, so, yes.
Yes, so instead of it being just adopted with the one reading resolution, it would be a public hearing, no action, so council can, can think about all the things that you've heard, receive the input, it gets the public, you know, understanding and knowing that you're gonna be bringing this up at the next agenda for action, and so then the second meeting would be for action, no public hearing. And people can always speak during citizen comment period and things like that as well, so it's, it wouldn't prohibit somebody from speaking on that agenda item as well.
Yeah, I'd like us to be able to discuss it at the public hearing, so that we can kind of get our ideas out, and then we give that time to gel, and then the second meeting is when we would vote. It'd still be a resolution.
Correct.
Not changing that. And Ms. Hernandez's input, please.
Yes, I'm, I'm actually fine with everything y'all are talking about, but I just wanted to let you know that just in the interest of transparency, we are also taking all of our area plans to Neighborhood Commission and to Planning and Zoning Commission, and holding a public hearing at Planning and Zoning Commission, even though it's not required. So we are doing our best to increase the transparency and give people the opportunity to participate, so we're, we're perfectly fine with this. We're gonna have to re-notice for one of our plans that's in process, but we will get that done, and
We haven't
it'll see you soon.
Well, we, we, this is concept, it'll have to come back to us, but can we also please add what Ms. Hernandez says that they're doing now, which is Neighborhood Commission, P and Z, the process she's following now, which is good, thank you, uh, go ahead and fold that into this, into this.
And I guess, I guess that is a question for Mr. Gueda, I mean, do we need to codify this, or is this something where direction to staff will suffice to allow us to, to do this going forward?
I, I think it would be helpful to understand how the, you know, if we're gonna have public hearings, I, I think it ought to be codified because
It makes it cleaner and more transparent for everybody.
If we don't, it'll be forgotten by the time we have the next plan, it'll get missed.
Right, and then we're gonna be like, remember that one meeting?
Just 'cause.
That we said we were gonna do this?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly, that happens.
Now, one little reminder, though, is that I, I think it's best to codify it. Could we do it without, perhaps, but the problem is consistency, and, and how does the public know the process and all that, but I think it's, would be in the Land Development Code, which is a text amendment, and we'd be going through the, you know, that process with the hearings and P and Z and all that, but right now, we're able to adopt area plans in the, in the interim, and
Are you saying this would go in the Land Development Code? Is where we would codify this?
Well
Could we do a policy? An area plan adoption policy? 'Cause our Land Development Code just got pushed a few months out, too.
Yeah.
I mean, could we do a resolution that has the policy for how council would like to take these things up for area plans?
If, we, we're, we're coming back with Land Development Code changes, right? Let's add this to it.
Next year.
Let's add this, let's add this to it.
But in the interim?
In the interim, we can follow, we, we can say this is what we would like to have, um, and you're already ahead of us on two other commissions that I didn't even address here, um, so if, if we're, that would be your direction?
So we just go, we just go forward in the interim?
In the interim, yeah.
As, as, that, this is our practice, that we're doing, but then we'll codify it as part of the Land Development Code when we bring the changes back.
Well, then we'll get real good, we'll get real good and practiced at it, and then we'll know exactly what to put in the Land Development Code.
Okay.
I think that's good.
Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so it will, it will, um, come back as part of the Land Development Code changes that we have winter 2024, early spring 2024, whenever that comes back. Okay, but we know what we're doing now. We're all good. Okay, yes.
And thank you, Amanda, for reminding us about that, and I appreciate the initiative.
Yeah. I knew that, I just, I, I wouldn't want you to change that, so, but yes, that does give this, uh, multiple opportunities. So now, I'm looking to see about removing from the table, since you're in here, I think, I'm assuming that means that you have finished and we, we have what we need. Okay, then I would like to make a motion to remove from the table Agenda Item Two, the Downtown Area Plan that we put on the table a couple of hours ago.
Oh, I forgot about that.
Uh, yeah. So, um, that's a motion to remove from the table, and I'm seeking a second. Ms. Trevino, let's vote on removing it from the table, and then we'll see about discussing it.
Okay, Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason, Mayor Houston.
Uh, aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Okay, so, Mr. Gary, this isn't a reconsideration, so we just pick up item two where we left off, correct? We don't tape it very often around here.
That's correct. You can just pick up where you left off, and, and you had asked staff to come forward with some possible wording?
Yes. And they did.
We did, and I believe it's on a few slides that we can run through on the screen here. Luckily, we had the slides ready to show you what we changed, so we would just be removing it. We would be looking for a motion to amend the motion that's currently on the table to remove the CM Allen Parkway District from page nine, page 61, removing in their entirety pages 74 and 75, and there is another reference on page 140.
That's, that's there at the end in the implementation plan, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
What she just said.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, um, Mr. Mendoza made the second. Any further discussion on this? And this is just removing it from the plan, we'll let staff come back to us and figure out what we're gonna do, how we're gonna get this, how we're gonna get this going. So we anxiously await that, but at this point, so if this passes, this is an amendment to take that out, we still have the main motion that we need to vote on after this, whichever way this goes.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Which is to approve the
All right, um, okay, remove CM Allen, okay. Ms. Trevino, let's vote.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason, Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye, I guess.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right, that was a motion to amend, so now we are on the main motion. Are there any further concerns, considerations on the downtown plan? If not, we're gonna vote on it, and if this passes, we have a new downtown plan? Okay. Ms. Trevino, let's vote on the main motion, pass the downtown plan without the CM Allen Green Space section.
All right. Um, Mr. Gleason, Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
And Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
That concludes item two. I believe we have finished everything up to item executive session?
Correct.
Okay, I've got the wrong number on here. Uh, that's item 15, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, item 15. Ms. Trevino.
The City Council will convene an executive session pursuant to the following section of the Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, Real Property for Deliberations Regarding the Possible Acquisition of Property for Stormwater Mitigation in Connection with the Purgatory Creek Improvements Project.
And, uh, council knows this to the folks in chambers and at home, we always post our executive session on the three o'clock meeting, we generally are able to have our executive session at that time, which we did today. So we've concluded that item, we do not need to go into executive session. Uh, Ms. Trevino, would you read item 16, please?
Consider action by motion or provide direction to staff regarding the following executive session, item held during the work session and or regular meeting pursuant to the following section of the Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, Real Property for Deliberations Regarding the Possible Acquisition of Property for Stormwater Mitigation in Connection with the Purgatory Creek Improvements Project.
Um, we, as noted, we did meet an executive session, and we did provide direction to staff. Any actionable items, if there are any, will come back on a public agenda in the future for a vote. So, Ms. Trevino, we are at question and answer with press and public, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and we have several people, we'll see if they're still here and/or online. So I will go to, we have Diana Baker, is she online? She'll be coming on here. Okay. Ms. Baker, you have three minutes to ask questions. Responses will be given only if it's a quick, easy response, if it requires us to look something up to make sure that we're giving an accurate answer, that will be done by email at a future date. Ms. Baker?
Okay, I just have a question. What's going to happen to all the data that was gathered? I think, I think staff gathered like a thousand comments, and, you know, I feel, it was bad enough that many of the citizen comments were ignored, but what about all the, I mean, many of the committee comments were ignored, but what happens to all the data that was gathered at all the rodeos or whatever, you know, the meetings that were held in the evenings for, you know, community come and have their input? Could we just start out with that data and not throw it all out?
I can't imagine that we would ever throw out any kind of data, so would it be safe to say that we, we will keep and consider that data? Mr. Pentalian?
Yes, Mayor, that's a good consideration, yes.
All right.
Yeah, because it would be, it would be a shame to throw everything out when all those people came to all those meetings and then just start over, with the people who are just coming out now and saying, well, this is not what we wanted. You know, because I believe a lot of what the, the comp plan plus-plus, you know, represented was what people and community wanted. So I just would like to see that included along with the new stuff that may be coming in.
I, I believe that data is available and will be considered.
All right, thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you. Our next person is Virginia Parker, who is not here, but she was remote earlier. Is she still online? Okay, she may, we, she may have gotten everything done she needed to get done. Tamia Shock, is she here? Is she online? Okay. Nancy Moore, and then Lisa Marie Capoletta. Is there anyone in chambers, if you'll line up over here at the, at the podium? Nancy Moore will be next. And if you'll ask all of your questions, and again, if we can answer it quickly and easily, we will, if it takes some research or we have to look something up, we'll respond to you by email. So go ahead and just ask all your questions in three minutes.
Is there a Neighborhood Commission?
Every neighborhood? The Neighborhood Commission has, there are districts, and there are representatives from each of the districts on the Neighborhood Commission.
And can we find out, where do we find out who is our representative and when they meet?
Mr. Greg Carr is the liaison, so you might have a conversation with him. Hold on, what other questions do you have, Ms. Moore?
It's on the website.
Oh, well...
I shouldn't have answered the first one, I'm supposed to let you ask all your questions first.
Oh, okay. So, so what's happened to the scenarios one, two, and three on C.M. Allen is that you've pulled it out, and now it's up to the staff to come back with when you're going to talk about it again, or how, you know, we're just going to let, leave it up to the staff, and is this going to be forgotten, or, and then we just, you know, it just stays the way it is, or, and all the people that have signed the petition, and it's going to keep going, we're going to keep it going, so that you will know your constituents and that they, this is their wishes, this is their vision, and you represent those people. And just to quickly get it out and put it to staff doesn't feel very good to a lot of people, I'm getting a lot of texts.
And, okay, hold on, I'm going to let Mr. Pentalian answer that, and Mr. Carr can answer the Neighborhood Commission question in, in a moment. I'll tell you, it's not going to get forgotten.
Well, I'm going to put that in writing.
You got it on video.
Okay, good. But is there a timeline?
Ms. Moore, please let us answer your question.
Okay, great.
So in regards to the Option 1 and, 1, 2, and 3 for the downtown plan, as was discussed before council, the C.M. Allen District was extracted out of the downtown plan and will be incorporated into the planning area effort for the planning area that's just to the south of the downtown area. So I don't know that that one has been given a specific name yet, but that will be incorporated into that plan, and by that time, there will be more information that should be available. And I see Planning Director Hernandez coming, who can probably elaborate.
Who thought she was on her way home?
On which, on which plan that is.
Three minutes is what we have, and anything else has to be settled.
Okay.
Have I gone past it?
Well, if you'll let Ms. Hernandez answer, we can get a little more done in that three minutes.
Yes, I came running when I heard Joe say we're going to make it part of, Mr. Pentalian, excuse me, make it part of the next plan south of downtown. What I heard is that we would actually do C.M. Allen as its own separate piece. When will that happen? I don't know, because we have six other plans lined up, we have to do our comp plan, you've given us direction on the Strategic Housing Action Plan, we just have a lot of those long-range planning efforts in process, so we'll have to work it into all of those other things.
Okay. Yeah, I, I had thought that, but that was, that was me talking, so. Okay, and we're going to let Mr. Carr answer quickly the Neighborhood Commission question.
Yeah, so we'll get directly the information she needs, but we do have a nice GIS tool on our website that shows you who the commissioners are, shows you what your garbage pickup date is, where parks and stuff are, but, so that's part of it.
And that web page is?
It's the Neighborhood Enhancement webpage, I'm not sure.
Neighborhood Enhancement, okay. All right, thank you. Dr. Ray?
I just had a quick question. I was under the impression that there were two applications for the parking board that I had recruited in the last month, Alana Rosenwasser was the other, and she didn't get mentioned, so I just wanted clarification.
I don't know what happened, but if, if you'll communicate with Ms. Trevino.
Cool.
And we do have a meeting next week, and we can put the second vacancy on.
Thank you for filling our vacancies.
Okay. And they'll still be before we meet again, because, yeah, so, quorum. No, I, I, anyone else in chambers wishing to ask questions? If not, we will go to Elisa Marie Capoletta, who joins us online.
Hi, I'm, this is Elisa Marie Capoletta. I'm so proud of all the people who showed up tonight to ask questions. Just for context, for years, we had these questions to answer press and public, and then it got cast out during the pandemic, and then I had to call the A.G. about this, and then I worked with the Charter Review Commission. It was mutated by the City Council, it was falsely voted on by the citizens, I called the A.G.'s office again, and now here we are, we finally have this as an appropriate agenda item. And I'm so proud of the Charter Review Commission and the Attorney General's Office. I've also noted how this has permutated. It used to be an interactive situation, and now we are told we have to ask our questions in three minutes. The Ethics Review Commission has three years of City Council videos to verify the statement I just made, how this used to be a highly interactive situation between the citizens, the elected officials and staff, and now it is, we have to bark out three questions, and I'm really confused by a statement the mayor made I'm supposed to ask. You sound like the guy in Washington, like they told me to. So I'm like confused of whose rule this is, because the rules change. But here are my questions. My first question is, where and when will all of the feedback from the Comprehensive Master Plan Committee, the Steering Committee, and all of the outreach events that Andrea is always purporting, and all of the other outreach that Nancy has asked about, where will that be posted, when will it be posted, and how will we be notified? Secondly, whose decision was it to roll out the downtown plan before the neighborhood plan, specifically the Heritage and the Dunbar, because we have the most to lose? See, the downtown is not under threat from the neighborhoods, but the neighborhoods are under threat from the downtown, as exemplified by the seven-story high-rises they want to build downtown and, and move historic homes. So, so those are my two questions, and it should be an easy answer, because the comp plan told city staff that we wanted those neighborhood plans first. So we're trying to understand whose decision that was to roll out the downtown plan before the Heritage and the Dunbar plan, because this is not equitable, that you're, you're doing that. And then I guess my final question is, whose idea was it to come up with Option 3? Because it doesn't seem equitable. We already weren't happy with the master plan proper or the downtown plan, and then we had your appointees fixed it, and then suddenly city staff took it upon themselves to make another developer-friendly plan. So those are my three questions, and, and let's see if you guys have the, the culture to actually answer on live TV versus waiting a week to get back to me.
Okay. Amanda Hernandez, Director, Planning and Development Services. The first question was about comments being available online, meetings being available online. We have Vision, SMTX.com, which has all of our Steering Committee meetings recorded and uploaded. I don't know that you'll find every individual comment that was left on every board at every event, but we have those. They're not on the website, we want to put them on the website, we absolutely can. Question about why we did the area plans, why we're doing the area plans now and not before the comp plan. We actually started the comprehensive planning process in 2020, and we started to talk about doing area plans first and realized we didn't even have a vision for the city. So we swapped the process, we talked to the committee about it, I believe we talked to City Council about it, and let y'all know that we wanted to have the comp plan first, the overarching document, so we could use those vision statements, goal statements, policy statements, to then inform the area plans. Where is the Dunbar Heritage Area Plan? It is almost on a Planning and Zoning Commission agenda. I believe it's on the 13th, which is, good grief, a week from now, so we are one week away from having a public hearing on the Dunbar Heritage Area Plan. There was a third question.
That wasn't my question. My question was, why did you put the downtown plan before the Heritage Plan in the trajectory of the vote?
Oh, sure, because the comprehensive plan and the downtown plan are just in general bigger plans, so we worked on those first.
Right, but we told you, we gave reasons why we needed to have ours first.
And I think that might conclude the answers to the questions, unless I missed something.
You've asked your questions, we've answered them.
Got it, Jane. It's control, it's the culture of control.
Do we have anyone else sign up for Q and A? In that case, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Prather. Let's vote. Uh, motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Prather.
Thank you. All right, let's start with Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason, Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to zero.
We are out of here at 8:55.